That can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the ready, set, go is that go piece, and it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community in a county that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate. We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge.
We'll call this order of the Nevada County Board of Supervisors, the regular meeting of August, October 10th, 2023. Chris, I wonder if you would lead us in the pledge, please? Madam Clerk, are there any corrections and/or deletions to the agenda?
Chair Schofield, there are not.
Very good. Then we will start with public comment. Members of the public shall be allowed to address the Board of Supervisors on items not appearing on today's agenda that are of interest to the public and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Speakers are encouraged, but not required, to give their name and district of residence. Please direct your comments to the board, not the audience or staff. No individual may speak more than three minutes, more than once during public comment, and you will have three minutes. Barbara, please.
My name is Barbara Larson. I've lived in Nevada County for 45 years. Thirty-eight of those years, I've worked in the field of elder care in a variety of settings. Hey, did you see the paper? You get the paper? You saw the paper?
Is that today's?
The first Nevada County Health Fair. We had over 350 people show up. We had 46 healthcare vendors. I just want to know what happened, that you guys didn't show up. We don't understand why this is not a priority. And this is not a rhetorical question, but because I only have three minutes, maybe you could email me. Heidi's got my email address. I sent you a letter. We had a variety of people come from the county, the Nevada County Suicide Prevention, County Transportation, Nevada County Veterans Services, the nurses, of course, gave flu shots, APS, Officers Emergency Services, Connecting Point, and a variety of services, nonprofits, as well as businesses. I've lived here for such a long time. At one point, when I worked for Del Aro Caregiver Resources, three of you Board of Supervisors were clients of Del Aro. Many, many judges were clients of Del Aro's. I'm an advocate for the elders in this community, and I don't understand why you didn't show up. The problem that I, and I even called Phoebe because you said that Behaver Health didn't know anything about it. And so anyway, so I called Phoebe up on the phone, left her a message. The clerk did not understand, the secretary who answered the phone didn't get it. I'm going to give you a scenario about what happened. About 10 months ago, the Chair of the Elder Care Providers Coalition, of which I started in 1991, Teresa Helene, called me and said, "I think we should have a health fair." Well, you called Allison. I called Allison. Allison thought it was a good idea. She said, "Get ahold of Ryan, Health of Human Services." Got ahold of Ryan, set a date, October 4th, and there we went. Multiple interviews on KNCO, KVMR, shout-outs from the union that were exceptional, many, 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 many interviews. PSAs, Ubinet, please tell me what we could have done. In the meantime, I brought you a copy of the updated Elder Care Providers Coalition Guide, that you will have a copy of, and I invite you, so maybe you can put it on your calendar now, October 9th, 2024, next, the second Nevada County Health Fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, and congratulations on a very successful health fair.
Good morning. I'm Court Warden. I reside at the 6B Ranch alongside my wife and three of our daughters here. We're here today to appeal the conditional approval of a commercial cannabis cultivation site at the 6B Ranch. We've spoken to many pro-cannabis organizations, and we all agree, this isn't the place for a 10,000-square-foot cultivation site. This tight-lipped administrative approval process doesn't allow for discretion until today, after the conditional approval has all been granted, and we're here to appeal that process with the Board of Supervisors. We've been informed, the only level of discretion is all with the Board of Supervisors in this entire process. An email from the senior planner alerted us to this project's approval 10 days ago because of a previous request. Otherwise, snail mail from the planning department notified us of the approval on day eight of the 10-day window to appeal. We've met with Supervisor Hook and department heads trying to refute several of the false allegations relating to the project in question, but our affidavits and our pictures that we've provided have fallen on deaf ears as a staff continues to approve a project that has flawed, that's been flawed from the beginning, inaccurate building timelines that predate the planning department, when in reality, the barns were all built in the mid to late 1960s, so they all require permitting, deceptive boundary line sketches causing public works to approve a project using our portion of the shared driveway for the neighbor to meet his driveway parameters. My wife and I are both service members and federal employees, so that's a clear violation of federal criminal law. This county has gone to extreme measures in an attempt to overlook the facts to bring another illegal grow into legal status within this county. I've reached out to Supervisor Hook multiple times over the past several years on this, and most recently last week, and I got to tell you, for somebody who touts their support for the troops, your silence in this project has been deafening, Sue. Recently, I read the Board of Supervisors approved a $1.2 million grant for cannabis growers struggling to become legal. This project must be the candidate for the grant. They've been living in unpermitted horse barns without a certificate to occupy for four-plus years, without a permitted septic system, and water being delivered to the living quarters by water hose. The owner is estimated to owe tens of thousands of dollars in back taxes and permitting fees. It's likely that we, the appellant, have invested more time and money in this project than the very landowner himself. A case could be made that Nevada County's in the business of real estate development for wealthy Chilean landowners, housing his tenants in horse barns and makeshift apartments in an attempt to transform an old horse barn into a legal residence. We've contacted the property owner who resides in Newport Beach regarding concerns of the severe risk on his property. The owner's become so emboldened by the lack of enforcement by the county that he tells us, as soon as we put our property on the market, then he'll clean his property up. So we ask, why, Nevada County, why are you promoting these type of landowners and approving permits with large debt from the property owners? This approval process is right with their, and this project is a prime example of the inadequacies of the administrative process. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Forrest.
Thank you for your time this morning. My name is Megan Warden, District 4, and my neighbors and I are here today to ask you to deny a commercial cannabis grow in our residential community. Over the last four years, our community has heard of a lot of, our hands are tied, from Nevada County leadership and staff who stand behind administrative rules and regulations, selectively applied when it benefits the applicant, something like, well, if it's allowed, then we must allow it. I'm a military member, and I understand rules and regulations, and later today, I'll be flying an Air Force mission, and as I have done for every mission the last 16 years, I will fill out an operational risk management worksheet. Everything on the form is legal, and it follows the rules, and each mission event counts for a point, and if the total amount of points gets too high, I have to start asking the question, is this mission worth the risk? Maybe not for a training mission, probably so for a real-world mission. I'm empowered, as is the Board of Supervisors, to ask this question, to apply discretion to the mission at hand. And so I ask you, is this mission worth the risk? Is it worth the risk to allow this one specific application from applicants who knowingly misrepresented facts countless times in their application, have misdemeanor convictions of lying to officials, have not paid their Nevada County taxes in years, adding to tens of thousands of dollars, by the way, to set up a commercial cannabis grow in a park-like setting that is surrounded on all sides by residential parcels? Does every neighborhood need to apply for sensitive site or youth-oriented facility status in order for them to get protection? Is it worth the risk to allow wealthy Chilean landowners who don't even live in this county to destroy communities with decades of strong ties to the county? Is it worth the risk to pollute the creek that directly feeds Wolf River and its ecosystems? Is it worth the risk to endanger many children that ride their bikes in full view of the cannabis canopy? If so, then yeah, say yes, let's execute this mission. Or maybe it's better to say, not here, not in this neighborhood, not on this one parcel. It is not worth the risk. I would like to close by stating my abject disappointment in the hypocrisy I see as a military member by this county. Our driveway will be shared with a cannabis operation, still a federal crime that my husband and I are held to. How is it supporting us to grant a property exception to the driveway standard, to know that when we are gone, we will worry about the risks literally occurring in our backyard? I know it is politically advantageous to say you support the military, but if I have learned anything serving my country is that talk is cheap and actions speak louder than words. Military members don't just swear an oath, we have to make the hard decisions. Hard decisions like leaving my three daughters over seven months last year, deploying and missing all holidays from Halloween to New Year's to fly combat flights, protecting those that need our help, and now I'm asking you to do the same. We need your help. Protect our community, protect our homes, protect our investments, and protect my children that I missed every night while I was deployed, and be the military-friendly county that we claim to be. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Megan.
My name is Dan Fox, District 4, and I also want to speak about the cannabis preapproval on the 6B Ranch. Bulk of my comments will be regarding a report issued by the Nevada County Grand Jury titled Cannabis in Nevada County: A Growing Problem that was released on May 11th, 2021. Under Permit Pathway, the new ordinance provides a permit pathway to legally cultivate commercial cannabis for parcels zoned ag, agricultural, and that are greater than five acres, with a potential grow canopy up to 10,000 square feet depending on lot size. For parcels designated residential slash agricultural, RA, commercial cultivation is prohibited, and a path to permitting does not exist regarding lot size. With over 40 neighbors in super-close proximity to this particular grow, I would say that this is, in fact, agricultural, residential. On the Grand Jury's report, they listed three things that were of concern to them on page five. County endangerment. During August, a 2020 Jones Fire, the Cal Fire diverted air support and resources for several hours to respond to a fire at an unpermitted cannabis grow. In 2019, a complaint had been filed against the very site, the fire's eventual source, but was labeled unfounded. Fencing obstructed the view of the county investigators, and the matter was dropped. The second item of their concern was other criminal activity. Records reviewed from local law enforcement and county prosecutors present evidence of criminal activity. Felony violations of law connected to illegal cannabis activity include, or but not limited to, homicide, attempted homicide, assaults with a deadly weapon, battery, robbery, theft, illegal possession of weapons, and drug possession, illegal manufacturing of dangerous substances, use of firearms, and the commission of these crimes and counterfeiting. Residents are placed at risk in instances of high-speed pursuits of weapons being fired at vehicles in residential neighborhoods. And their third concern was called quality of life. The most common complaints received from our neighbors regarding cannabis grows include obnoxious odors, eyesores, fencing issues, unknown individuals, and increase in criminal activity, thefts, heavy traffic, water issues such as contamination and well abuse. The skunk-like smell is what they also refer to later in that paragraph. You, Board of Supervisors, have an out, have an out on this. You have an out because the law states that, in contract law, fraud eviscerates all contracts. So therefore, if, I understand the application has many incorrect facts that were submitted in their application, this fraud removes the county's obligation to proceed. It also compels the Board of Supervisors to remove the preapproved status. The functions of the Grand Jury include indictment, accusation, and by far the most frequently exercised function, civil investigation and reporting. That may be the other alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Ralph?
Good morning. Ralph Silverstein, CEA Foundation. CEA has been reviewing the vested rights petition from Rise Gold, and we have our legal team preparing comments for the upcoming hearing. We are encountering the same issues that we have encountered at every turn of this application process, that Rise Gold seems to have a problem keeping the facts straight. I thought it would be useful to give some examples from the Planning Commission hearing last May to make my point. In comments to the Planning Commission, Rise Gold Representative Brayden Chadwick stated that, quote, "There's going to be no one on the surface working outside," unquote. This is a false statement that ignores the reality that continuous dumping and grading operations will be going on for about 11 years. Later, responding to the staff report's statement that, quote, "The primary issue is the buffer between the mining operations and the adjacent land uses, especially residential," Chadwick argues that the buffer issue is not an issue, noting that of the 120 acres at the Brunswick site, only 60 is going to be used for the project itself. Quote, "So the boundary line is maintained," unquote. This ignores the reality of the homes surrounding the project. Chadwick also falsely claims that the Brunswick property is unique, and that it is the only way to get the gold. However, the 56-acre Centennial Site on Idaho-Harryland Road is a viable site and was used up until this mine shut down in 1956, and the plans to reopen the mine around 2008, M-Gold Mining Project centered on the Centennial Site, not the Brunswick Site. Chadwick claims that the concern over truck traffic is overblown and states, quote, "The mine project has only 112 one-way daily truck trips," unquote. That's only one truck every 20 minutes. The correct interval is 115 trucks, one every 8.3 minutes. Rise Gold proposed using alternate two, which shifts all onsite mine waste dumping to the Brunswick site for a total of 11 years. In response to concerns about the increased visual and noise impacts, Chadwick stated that the pile would, quote, "Almost double the height," unquote, ending up at 100 feet. In fact, the final pile height would be increased to 140 feet. And regarding the visual impact of the 140-foot pile, Chadwick stated, quote, "I believe the intent is to plant similar trees that exist out there now in terms of coniferous trees," unquote. In reality, only an erosion-controlled grass seed mix is planned. Clearly, Rise has a problem with accuracy. In reviewing the upcoming vested rights case, I urge the board to use caution and maintain a healthy skepticism. It will be your challenge to separate the fact from the fiction. I wish you luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ralph. John?
Good morning. My name is John Vaughn. I live in District 3. You might be surprised to hear that I've been doing lots of research on the Rise Gold vested rights petition. I'm going to talk about a few items that stand out. Rise petition makes up a new term, vested rights property, which is used 116 times in their 77-page petition. In fact, there's no such thing as a vested rights property until this Board of Supervisors decides whether it exists. It appears Rise is using a technique called repetition priming, which is a type of psychological conditioning where repeated exposure to a false term makes it more likely the term will be seen as true. Today, this technique is often called gaslighting. The facts also show that Rise does not own all the parcels that were originally part of the Idaho-Harryland Mine properties. For example, Rise does not own any of the parcels east of Centennial Drive, which were an integral part of the Idaho-Harryland Mine. Additionally, what Rise calls the Brunswick Industrial Site was, according to Rise's 2017 technical report, originally called the Brunswick Land and the Mill Site Land. The Brunswick Land is 37 acres. The Mill Site Land is comprised of 82 acres, which were always used as a sawmill. From 1956, when Idaho-Harryland Mine Corporation sold the Mill Site Land, until 1991, the Mill Site was operated as a standalone sawmill, not a mine. From 1991 until now, the Mill Site has been abandoned except for various community uses. Then the Rise petition makes a big deal of the 1979 use permit, U 7941, claiming that because various planning department and planning commission documents use the words "nonconforming use," those words mean the county acknowledged vested rights. In fact, if you read all the communications about U 7941, no one was asking for or said anything about vested rights. What was happening is that North Star Rock and Marion Gododi had acknowledged they were moving rock without a use permit. So the "nonconforming use" was that they didn't have a use permit, which is all the county was acknowledging. It had nothing to do with vested rights. Rise's claim for vested rights is as faulty as their EIR, which your planning commissioners rejected. I respectfully request that you just say no to all elements of the Rise project. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good morning. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. First of all, I want to say to the lady that just spoke, that's in the military, God bless you for your service. I worked at Bill for 20 years, and I'm telling you what, I support those people out there, and God bless them for what they do to keep this country safe. When are you guys on this board going to make sure that this community's safe and stop wasting the taxpayers' money? You know, it's kind of like, do as I say, not as I do. And I really believe that Natalie Adona needs to go. She's wasting way too much of our taxpayers' money, and we need to have a community open forum meeting regarding how much money you guys are wasting. Thank you.
Geez, thank you, Bill.
Good morning to all. My name's Alexis Flippin-Von Zimmer, here with my husband, David, and in full disclosure, we are among the 40-plus appellants to the recently approved conditional approval of the 6B Ranch marijuana grow. We are relatively new residents to the 6B area, and we assumed it to be a cannabis-free dream retirement area at the beautiful historic ranch. And first, I'd like to acknowledge District 4 Supervisor Suhaq, Kyle Smith, the senior planner, as well as Clerk Julie Patterson, all of whom are very responsive to my calls and forthcoming with information. As I said, in the spirit of full disclosure, I'm one of the appellant, and today is not the day or time in our country for humor and levity, but I'm going to try a little bit anyway. Spinning off of what Mr. Warden and Mrs. Warden have said, we are now aware that there's a $1.2 million grant, so my theme is, if you can't beat 'em, join 'em. So being a senior citizen and a US citizen, my husband and I are retired NASA engineers, and in our professions, you don't smoke dope, not that it's not illegal any longer, but you certainly don't want stoners working with nuclear weapons and doing rocket science. In any event, the overall message is that we can't beat 'em, join 'em. So we understand that this $1.2 million grant may have already gone out to those who are in application. I hope we're not too late, but heck, it's free taxpayer money, as they say. In any event, we are retired, so we may need to supplement our income, and I think we're ahead of the game. We're US citizens, we're senior citizens, our taxes are current, we've served our country, we don't encroach upon anybody's easement, there are no water setbacks issues on our property, we're fully compliant, have a legal residence with septic, we don't live in our barn, and we have the means to mitigate things that are noncompliant within a timely manner. So we're not sure what else we need to do. I don't know if there's a minimum number of plants, and I don't know if we would get seven years to bring our property into compliance, but just one last thought for you. You are all stakeholders in this, as well as those of us who are residents, to preserve your reputation for fair and just approval of the laws and not to put... your reputation for fair and just approval of the laws and not to put those doing illegal things over those of taxpayers. So if we can't beat 'em, I guess should we join 'em? Thank you all. And I don't mean to be sarcastic, because they're a very challenging time in our nation, but this is still not trivial in our local environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Alexis. Alicia?
Hi, good morning. My name's Elsie Winger. Like my neighbors, my husband and I oppose the cannabis project. We live across McCartney and already have a grow behind our property. So now we'll be surrounded on both sides. One of our biggest concerns is the fire danger. My husband is a firefighter, that's why he can't be here today. He travels down to Long Beach and works down there as a firefighter. So the fire danger is a big concern for us. Also, the odor, as we've been saying, you know, we already have the smell behind us. Now it's, you know, no matter which way the wind's going, we're going to have that smell. I homeschool our three children, so we're outside all the time, and, you know, then I'm explaining what the smell is. Our other biggest concern is the living situation down there. The grow behind us has a home, but it has brought in trailers that now have a myriad of people living in them. If the Mazu property already has people living in an old unpermitted barn, I can only imagine what this will bring. The grow behind us has made us worry about letting our kids play on the backside of our property, and I don't want that for our Sixbee neighbors and my children who play at homes who neighbor that property. Lastly, we are upset with what this will do with the beautiful Sixbee Ranch. This idyllic ranch is remembered by so many in this area, and if the owner isn't able to keep up the property already, who knows what will happen once this grow is going, and not to mention the eyesore of these tents that will be out there. And I think it's going to ruin a piece of this county's history. There are plenty of responsible grow sites in our area, but this is not and should not be one of them. Thank you for your time.
Could I get your name again? I missed your name when you first--
Elsie Winger.
Elsie, thank you. No, 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 no. Madam Clerk, is there any other-- are there any callers?
Yes, Chair Schofield, we have one caller and two written comments that were received.
Very, very good. Bring the caller in, please.
Okay, let's do the caller first.
Hi, Board of Supervisors, can you hear me?
We can, Matthew. Proceed.
Very good. Matthew Coulter, Nevada County. I'd like to echo what some of the folks said about code compliance, basically, and not necessarily about marijuana, but about other things, air quality and different types of pollution that have just dramatically increased in the last few years, and there just doesn't seem to be any slowing it down. No one seems to be too concerned about it. I'll mention specifically East Bennett Street and the illegal dump that's out there with burned cars and the whole nine yards that many different people are dumping on and have dumped on and have burned on, which also then flows into the homeless camp that's out there that no one seems to be doing anything about. The amount of trash that's out there is just incredible, because they've literally driven in with couches and chairs and houses, and so it's a scene out there, very dangerous. Also, on Empire Cross, and these are projects I've worked on for 10 years with code compliance, and I keep getting the runaround and different people, and they're working on it, and then now the house is up for sale on Empire Cross. I mean, we're talking a little piece of property that's completely surrounded by Empire Mine State Park, and it's a trash dump. It's a toxic trash dump, and no one's doing anything about it. You can see it from the street. It's not hidden, it's not over a hill, it's very visible, but no one wants to do anything about it. Then we move on to the Brunswick Site for Rise Gold, and all their core samples that they had taken from their test site that was just a nightmare, that was just fine for all kinds of things, all that stuff, the boxes are all broken open, spilled all over the ground, there's 55-gallon drums with toxic stuff spilled all over the ground out there. It is just a mess, and they need to clean that stuff up, because it's all going airborne, and it's all a lot of asbestos and all kinds of crap. And on a lighter note, Sue, on my page, people have mentioned that the park in Western Gateway Park, the children's park, needs some attention. It's got a broken slide or some piece of dangerous equipment, that people don't believe the county has the capability to even do that amount of maintenance, that when I say, hey, contact this person, they're like, oh, yeah, right, like anything's going to happen. So we go from the very smallest piece of maintenance to massive pieces of property that are being just polluted to the max, and it's under your guys' purview, these things, and no one's doing anything about it. And it's a sad situation, what's happened in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Madam Clerk, we have two written--
That's correct. If you would like, I can go ahead and read--
Yes, yes, please.
--three minutes of each into the record. Okay. The first comment is from Lynn Forbes, a District Four resident, to the Nevada County Board of Supervisors. The Planning Department's approval for a cannabis operation at the Sixbee Ranch 14120 Thoroughbred Loop Grass Valley is a blatant disregard of the county, state, and federal laws. It is also an egregious dismissal of stone-cold facts. Time and time again, neighborhood property owners have submitted documentation of the applicant's inaccurate site plan and failure to meet fire suppression, water, environmental, and other requirements. Why? Why does the county refuse to abide by our laws? Why is the increased risk of fire, health hazards, crime, and property devaluation acceptable? The application has been returned as incomplete many times over four long years, yet we had 10 days to file an appeal with an $1,800 price tag. In addition, the owner owes tens of thousands of dollars in unpaid property taxes. Something is very wrong with this picture. Do your jobs, do the right thing, and reject this application once and for all. The second letter is from Tracy Leese, also District Four resident. Dear Board of Supervisors, Susan Hook, in her Board of Supervisors description, says, "It is critical that we address all our issues with compassion and understanding. This can be the difference between the policy that simply checks the boxes and policy that addresses an issue in a meaningful way. I am asking you, as a Board of Supervisors, to make sure you are not simply checking the boxes and addressing the issues of the cannabis project in a meaningful way. I have been in conversation with some of my neighbors and am worried. I do not feel you have heard or seen the residents of Sixbee Ranch in this decision-making process, and ask now, ask you now to rethink this conditional approval. We have been working hard to follow fire-wise advice on our properties with major cleanup projects individually and as a community. We all have wells and rely on groundwater as drinking water and to run our homes. We also have perennial streams running through our neighborhood. We are proud of our neighborhood and are taking good care of it. You could currently use us as an example of how neighborhoods can work together with the county to increase fire safety and develop best practices. If this farm develops, I am worried about water pollution, light pollution, air pollution, the traffic this farm will generate, and having people in our neighborhood that are not part of our community but our short-term hired residents. I am worried about overuse of our ground and irrigation water, the smell of bud before harvest, and the upkeep of the farm. I am worried that none of this will be supervised well, as you do not have the human capacity to oversee these projects. I moved here three years ago, and my realtor considered this one of the nicest neighborhoods in Grass Valley. We are now worried that all our home values will decrease in close proximity to this marijuana farm. This means your tax revenue of our homes will also decrease. If your goal is to generate revenue for the county, is this really the place to do it? Let's say our home values lost 10%. What fiscal loss would that be to the county? While I am not opposed to marijuana farming, I am confused as to why you are permitting a farm in what has developed into a beautiful, proactive, supportive neighborhood instead of shepherding the 3,500 to 4,000 illegal farms into legal grows. I am worried that when you told us in the first meeting you didn't have enough of a policing force to manage these farms, that you will not have the human power to oversee this, that this project follows county rules and regulations, especially when you are overlooking so many in this initial permitting process. One of your core services is to support community health and safety. I do not believe you are taking our health and safety and the health of the environment we live in into account in this permitting process."
I'm going to have to wrap it up, team.
Okay. You have received the remainder of the comment via email.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair Schofield, and there are no further written comments or callers.
Very good. Is there any further public comment in the chambers?
Hi, my name is Gerald Bennett, and I live in the Sixbee Ranch area. We moved here two and a half years ago. Prior to purchasing the property, we drove through the area before we ever looked at any of the properties. We drove through the area to find out what kind of a community it was and determined it was excellent, beautiful, serene, great place to move. So we looked for property and ended up purchasing two and a half years ago. We moved from Calif-- excuse me, we moved from Colorado, Colorado being one of the frontrunners in marijuana. We are, my wife and I are very, very aware of all of the major nuisances created by cannabis growers. Had we known that there was a possibility of this happening in my backyard, we never would have purchased, never, because we've experienced this. This is unfair to a community of 40-plus homes that's been around for 30 to 40 years, developed a very peaceful, quiet, nice place for kids, our grandkids, to come and visit us on weekends, and now we put up with the nuisances that I don't want to sit here and take the time to go over, because you have the documentation. I would ask of the board to please, Mr. Warden has compiled a lot of facts, righteous facts, that I would appall you to, please read them and realize their validity, because I think you've been given a lot of misinformation. And I think if you look at this, you'll realize this is something that's moving in on a community that's been around for a long period of time, well-established, very peaceful, very quiet, great place to visit. And that's going to change because of the negative aspects, and everyone knows about the negative aspects of a marijuana grow. It can't be avoided. So I respectfully, I'm requesting that you please look at this and deny this permit, because this is changing an entire community. I lose because my property values inevitably will go down. If I lose, then you lose, because your property revenue goes down. I lose, you lose, there's only one winner, a gentleman who lives in Newport Beach, 500 miles from here, in an exclusive community, and probably the nearest marijuana grow is 100 miles away from him. He has no plan to be here and be around us and be involved in it, so he's not exposed to it. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Gerald.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Fox. I've lived in this area for 40 years, and I know, or I've seen most of your names and people who've lived here, except for I've lived in different districts, so I've lived up on the ridge, and I've had grows next to me. I've had, lived next to illegal grows, a lot of them, and the people that they bring there are not good, even if they're legal grows. When the bud comes to harvest close to around this time of year or a little bit before, there's a lot of people that come in the area that steal from them, and they don't do it nicely. They come in armed, they don't care who's in the way, they don't care if you're adult or a children, they're just interested in their money that they get. So I know you don't, most of you probably don't live next to grows or have that experience, I don't know, but I've lived in Grass Valley, I've lived in Nevada City, I've lived all in that area, and now I live in Grass Valley, and I love this area. I love Grass Valley a lot more than I do Nevada City, which really doesn't matter. But the point is, Sixbee Ranch is a really nice area, and I know what it's going to bring when it has those hoop houses, when it pollutes the area, when grows come in and they use the toxicity that they use, which you guys say that you or Planning Department says that they come in and pre-approve things, but if they're not taking care of their land right now, how are you going to protect the people around them? Because right now, they don't value their property right now, because they don't own it, for one, but they also don't take care of it. They don't mow it, they don't provide a housing for themselves, equivalent to all these taxpayer people, including me, that pay the taxes and are legal, that live here, but that you're not supporting. You're supporting whatever this amounts to you, I don't know whether it's the money that comes from different ways and people get payoffs, I don't know, it's assuming. But I'd really like you to represent us as people who live in this county, who've lived here for a very long time, which I know, Sue, you have, because your family has, but really, like Megan said, walk your talk, put your actions to where your mouth is, that you say that you support the people, do that, so we feel secure in our area, we feel proud to live here, as Megan and Court has, and they've done a lot of work, and now they're putting their money out to protect their children. That's not fair, that's not right, and I hope you guys never get in that position, but you might be one day. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Chair Schofield, we have received one more caller.
Very good.
Okay, let's take that caller.
Bring your caller in, please.
Can you hear me in there?
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
My name is Calvin Clark from Rough and Ready, and after a long train of abuses, neglect, neglect of the health and safety in the community, eventually people show up and they speak out, and when it comes to health and safety, I'm concerned that the Board of Supervisors takes lightly the beginning of redress of grievances, namely, public comment. I would propose that the Board of Supervisors place on their agenda for the next meeting some of the solutions to, and their plans for what they would like to do to solve some of the health and safety concerns that have been mentioned in this meeting this day. Also, there has been cover-ups and concealment of facts, and we've seen the county lose taxpayer dollars in lawsuits, even regarding the elections office concealment for not, Natalie Adona not providing, not working in transparency. If that is a plague in the county, then the next step of redress of grievances commonly is petitions, which then lead to recalls. And I'm one, as a proponent, for solutions. And hopefully, the Board of Supervisors will make effective decisions that will be concerning the health and safety of not just the citizens, but also the families and the property owners that are vested, interested, property owners who actually pay property taxes to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Calvin. Is there any other public comment?
Hi, Board of Supervisors--
Bring that mic down to your face. Thank you.
I am Carol Dennis. I live on Thoroughbred Loop. I have the property line alongside of this parcel, and I really am upset with no one. I don't know if any of you, you know, have come out there and looked at the property, but it is a mess. They have weeds two to three feet tall alongside of my driveway. There are dead trees everywhere, there are limbs fallen, there is blackberry everywhere. You know, I mean, it is a horrible mess. And yet, because of the fire conditions, I am, have my insurance company checking out my property and looking next door, and do you think that they're going to approve my insurance with things that are next door? I mean, I am appalled that this conditional permit was offered to these people, and I think it needs to be denied. And do you think that they're going to approve my insurance with things that are next door? I mean, I am appalled that this conditional permit was offered to these people, and I think it needs to be denied, based partially on the fire condition. But there are several, several comments within their information that they've provided to you that are untrue, and you need to dig and look at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. All right, seeing no other public comment, I'm going to close this session, this session of public comment, general public comment. And I assume those of you with Sixbee who are filing an appeal, yes, so we will be seeing you again. All right, then we will move into our consent calendar. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. The Board of Supervisors will act upon them at one time without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Members of the public wishing to ask questions or hear discussion on items listed under the consent agenda may now raise their concerns to the board members. The supervisors will take these concerns under consideration and decide if there is adequate reason to remove the item from the consent calendar. Board members, any items? No, no. Madam Clerk, any items?
No callers or written comment.
Members of the public, any items you wish to have pulled? Madam Clerk, any calls?
We are screening one caller, Supervisor. Oh, no callers.
No callers, very good. Then I will, I will entertain a motion for approval to consent calendar.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout. Second Supervisor Bullock. Madam Clerk?
District four.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. Very good, thank you. All right. Then we will move into Department Head Matters, and our first item is our Agricultural Commissioner, Kristin Nies, acceptance of the 2022 Nevada County Crop and Livestock Report. And Lucy Wilson.
Good morning, Chair Schofield, Members of the Board. Again, Kristin Nies, Nevada County Agriculture Commissioner, and with me I have agricultural biologist Lucy Wilson. We're happy here to present our 2022 Crop and Livestock Report. This report not only talks about the monetary value of crops grown in Nevada County, but also reports about the many activities the Ag Department conducts to protect agriculture. Just wanted to highlight that the values of the report today are also, are gross values and they don't reflect farm profitability. In 2022, the total value of agriculture excluding cannabis was $18,773,400. This is actually a decrease of 12% compared to the 2021 value, largely due to a significant reduction in wine grape values because of the extreme freezing weather we experienced in April and May of 2022. Also, we created for the second year in a row a supplemental cannabis report, and that in 2022, the value of cannabis was estimated to be $6,932,500, which is a nearly 45% reduction over the 2021 value. So at this time, I'm going to turn over to Lucy Wilson, our Ag biologist, to kind of go further into the details of our report.
Good morning, Board members. It's a pleasure to be here today, present this annual report.
Just move that mic over there. There you go, Lucy.
Thank you. And present this report for you today. So as Chris Bardley outlined already, some of the larger events that affected our crop report, crop values in our county in 2022, we had some ups as well as the significant downs already mentioned. A lot of values we're going to see held fairly steady from the year before. For example, vegetable production, 1% increase. When you move to livestock, you'll see similar, that the industry was just sort of holding steady overall. Obviously, the wine grapes suffered significantly, and you can see actually the white wine grapes were heavily affected with almost 100% loss in that crop due to the double freeze events in April and May. What will happen often with wine grapes is that after the first buds begin to form with new growth, if there's a freeze event, there will become new growth, and so you may still have a partial crop. So when initially we're reaching out to growers to find out how severely they were affected after the initial April freeze, which had several days below freezing for night temperatures in a row, they said, well, we don't, we don't know yet, we have to wait and see for the second growth. And then we had the second event almost 29 days later with another two nights below freezing, and so that pretty much just wiped out. And you can see that the white, the white varietals were particularly susceptible to that frost. Nursery products were down a bit. I think that had a lot to do with just kind of some, some changes overall in the economy. People are largely back to work in 2022, they were spending less time at home, but we still see a nice increase in cut flowers. People still like to have beautiful things around their home. And as I mentioned already, livestock production had held fairly level. We did hear from local growers and producers that while they'd had to lower some of, sell off some of their herds, but prices increased also as part of that supply and demand chain. And so overall, the production had held fairly steady. Similarly, with apiary values or beehives, we did see a significant increase in the gross value of honey, but otherwise, the value amounts were holding fairly steady. Our 10-year summary just reflects some of these overall trends. The largest line typically is always our livestock and related livestock products, they're at the top in orange. At the bottom, you can see timber has fallen significantly, well, I didn't call that on the previous page, as has come up in previous years when asked about the timber value. That's highly affected by the amount that Sierra Pacific Industries, SPI, which is the largest timber landholder in the state, as well as specifically within our county, will divert their harvest plans to perform salvage operations in other areas where there have been fires. So that's a reflection that we have not had large fires here, but it also means they're not harvesting here right now. We have found that there's been a surge of Oriental fruit fly throughout the state. They've been finding several Oriental fruit flies in our detection trap programs throughout the state and other counties, so we wanted to highlight the importance of Oriental fruit fly, some key things of what folks can do. Do not bring or especially mail fresh fruits, vegetables, or plants into our state from other areas. Something that we work to do is intercept plant material that might be infected with this invasive pest, thereby keeping it out of our county and out of our state. Make sure you don't try to sneak that stuff when you're traveling back into our state. And we want to make sure that our workers who are going out and performing, we put out traps to look for this, to make sure it's not being introduced into our county inadvertently, that they have good access to properties where we can perform adequate testing to test for their presence in our county. We continue to have a successful invasive weed control program. This provides a number of different benefits for our community, helps to safeguard our natural infrastructure, strengthen climate resiliency, protect water resources, decrease wildfire risk, and preserve biodiversity of our local environments. We had a great crew this year. Some of this reflection is actually from the 2022 season where we had a very small crew with limited access. Our department performs a number of sustainable agricultural activities. As I mentioned, we perform daily inspections at various facilities, including UPS and FedEx, and also our local nurseries who are receiving nursery shipments from outside of our areas. We inspect those for live exotic pests as well as potential pathogens that we don't want to see coming into our county. We placed and inspected 469 insect traps, those include Oriental fruit fly, other fruit flies, glasswing sharpshooter, gypsy moth from other states, just to name a few. We had surveyed in 2022 340 sites and treated for noxious and invasive weeds. We issued over 151 pesticide permits, which are CEQA equivalent review processes. And we issued 23 certified producer certificates to local growers who were operating within six different certified farmers markets, and we had 47 registered organic producers. In addition to that, we also performed our weights and measures inspections where we weighed and measured almost 1,200 weighing and measuring devices for accuracy within the commercial trade. As part of our environmental protection programs, we performed 69 pesticide use and safety-related inspections. These include compliance monitoring, compliance assistance that focus on protecting pesticide applicators and workers. We investigate all priority pesticide-related incidents and illnesses. We actually perform those in conjunction with our state partners, sometimes federal partners, and other state-level stakeholders such as OSHA. We issued 245 CEQA-compliant pesticide permits for the use of commercial quantity products, including herbicides, and we enforce the requirements of pesticide product labeling and ensure safe use of those products. We also taught a grower continuing education class and issued 80 private applicator certificates for farmers to provide required pesticide training to their employees. And here we see featured our own biologists, Tony Romero and Preston Newfeld, enacting a skit to show people what to expect during a pesticide inspection by our staff. Moving on to our cannabis supplemental report, you can see from 2022 and 2021 that we were up almost 50 authorized cannabis permits here within our county, not quite a doubling in our total canopy size, and of course, that large decrease in value from 2021 to 2022. These estimated values are based off the paid taxes of, with the assessor's office, and we really see that this was a large result of transitioning into the legal marketplace and some of the complications that, of course, come with that transition. We still see many growers who are outside of that framework as well as moving in, and that did have a large impact on the dollar amount, unfortunately. It went much lower than anyone really anticipated that the price would drop per pound. We are seeing that stabilizing and anticipate some better numbers for 2023. I also added this year just a comparison of the number of permits by grow type, so you can see the number that are done in what's called a mixed light setting, in which they have some type of a hoop house, a greenhouse, or other fabric that they can use to help extend their seasons and control conditions underneath a little bit better, those that are strictly indoor, and those are strictly outdoor.
Yeah, so again, I just want to thank all the producers that have responded to our survey without their information, were unable to produce this report. Wanted to thank my staff for helping compile the information, and especially Lucy Wilson. She was instrumental in preparing this report, compiling the data. She was in charge of the layout of this report that you see in front of you today. She was the go-to person, so my extreme appreciation to Lucy for this. And with that, I think we're, take any questions you may have.
Good report, thank you. Sue, start with you.
This was a great report, and I got to experience what Lucy did just in a hair of gathering information, so kudos to you, you are amazing. And I just, I always love looking at this because it's always fun to see just the diversity we have in our community, but you know, from cut flowers to trees to livestock, to the honeybees. So it's really kind of interesting what we produce here, and you know, when timber used to be our biggest industry, and then to see some of those gaps being filled by some other things is kind of exciting as we move forward. I think there'll be some more, and I wonder, so curiosity with timber industry, do we count any of the co-gen stuff that comes out of here as a value or we pay? I just would be curious, that'd be something, you know, we do, we did so much shipping here, like with, and well, Caltrans, look how many, much timber they took out at the time. So I just look curious where that falls into that.
Yeah, a lot of the information we gather is from the Department of Forestry and the information that they're able to, to collect through taxes, so that's the main, primary source of our value.
Yeah, I think it's interesting to watch too, because just like anything, there's an ebb and flow of agriculture, like this year, the market, cattle market's really good. You know, sometimes you have to weigh out what's happening with feed and rain and all the things that go with it. Sometimes if, obviously, there's a shortage in livestock right now, so the market goes high. Next year could be totally different, so everybody has to really be flexible and love what they do in agriculture. So you guys do so much. When I watch it, the, when you look at where we work on invasive species, that is huge. I know we do a lot more of that, more on the west side, I mean, on the east side because of the stinking old things that the, what are those little crustaceans that grab on there, too?
Yeah, there actually were some, you know, with the aquatic invasive species.
Yeah, so the, on top of the ground, we have those too. So it's really interesting, and I think it's interesting too because the work being done from interstate is challenging. When we watched, like Lucy made a comment, don't bring bad things back into our state. And it's easy, you don't think of it, you could pick up fruit or something from a different area, and you could be bringing something in devastating here, so, and how we work that's a little bit different. You didn't even get to talk about what you do when plants come in and how you guys work with that, because those get shipped in here and you have to inspect those. So there's so much more to your department, for the small department you are, and what you guys accomplish, and you're very much appreciated on top of running our Ag Commission and having groups that come in and look at what we do all across the state. So it was fun, I went to an event over the weekend and it was all local wines that were served, and it's fun to watch what our wine industry is still doing even in the midst of having a crisis in a year for production. So thanks you very much, it was good. Thanks, Lucy.
Thank you. Agriculture's not a big part of my district, and I have learned so much from working with you guys since I've been here the last 10 months, so I really appreciate all the work that you do. I never really understood why you couldn't bring fruits and vegetables in from other places, but now I know, it's not good. So just appreciate the hard work that you're doing, and it's really interesting to kind of see the end results with all the numbers. So is, how is your report circulated within the community? Is it posted on the website, or is there printed copies that people can get?
Yeah, we have definitely posted on our website, we have limited hard copies for folks, and then, you know, we'll be working with our PI officer to have a press release here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. This is always a beautiful and useful report, so thanks to Lucy also for all your work to pull that together. It's nice that it's concise, but still gives you all the information you need. I'm sad to hear about the grapes, and I'm knock on wood that that second freeze didn't devastate them again for this coming year. And I'm wondering about the timber, you mentioned that you're getting your statistics on that from the Department of Forestry also, not from SPI?
Yeah, SPI, so the way we get that information is, there is a forestry tax that they have to pay, and so they have to report their harvest numbers to the Department of Forestry, and we get that numbers directly from them. And so that number does include SPI. SPI has a number of different landholdings throughout California, and what we've seen over the, you know, previous almost decade now is scavenge harvesting, so when you have a fire that goes through an area, that wood's only good for a certain amount of years, two to three years at max. And so SPI has focused a lot of their efforts on those areas that have been burned to get that, the wood out of that area before it becomes unusable. So we've been lucky in the sense we haven't had any major fires here in Nevada County, but that obviously has impacted our timber industry here as well with SPI.
So our assumption is because they're doing all the salvage elsewhere, they don't have the staff to, or resources to be doing timber production here?
Correct, yeah, so if you remember the Carr Fire up in the Shasta area, that was a huge fire. We had the North Complex a couple of years ago, I mean, millions of acres being burned, a lot of that is SPI land, along with Forest Service land as well. But, you know, SPI also has a lot of the mills in California, and so when they are frantically harvesting timber elsewhere and bringing it to their mills, there's, there is a backup there as far as, you know, the ability to process those lumber. So what I am hearing though, that, you know, they're, they're getting through a lot of that stuff, and potentially this year we might have seen an increase for next year.
Okay, and we don't, you don't have a relationship with them necessarily, right? Directly?
They, go ahead.
You guys, your team?
I have actually reached out, you know, we do work with them, but they manage it not by county, they manage it by a regional area. So our local region also includes portions of Yuba and Sierra Counties, and I think a portion of Placer, and so they're not able to provide numbers in a way that are just Nevada County numbers.
Okay, yeah, I get that, and most of our federal and state partners have the same issue. I'm just wondering, and maybe this is something to talk to Kimberly Parker about in terms of economic resource, if we can develop a closer relationship with them and of economic resource, if we can develop a closer relationship with them and understand to, talk to them about what we could do to make it easier for them. I mean, we clearly could use more, more activity in this area. So just a thought. But in terms of the report, it's, thank you very much. It looks really good. Knock on wood that we keep, our agricultural sector keeps being so healthy. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for the report. The infographics are great. I like it. And just, just a comment on the timber side, and I think I did meet with SPI, at least for my area, and they're focused, because not necessarily the labor market or the lack thereof to do the harvesting, it's really the market, right? So the market is flooded with sawlogs and dimensional product. So there's really no reason to go and cut their own land here. But I think, and this is a question maybe for later, but the exemption permit that allows something to be cut for utility purposes or right of way, like Sue was talking about on Highway 20, that is all exempt from yields tax as well, right? I mean, I don't necessarily know if, because I'm thinking just like, there's probably 35 million feet that were cut on Highway 20 that's not in this report, that had some value, but it was probably on an exemption permit, so it probably didn't end up registering. I think that may be, I guess what comes to mind that...
Because it went to making...
Yeah, the big one, the big one that I'm thinking of is Highway 20, just seeing those huge log decks, log decks for, for a year and a half or so. So that may be something we can look at.
Thank you, yeah. We'll definitely have to look into that, for sure.
Yeah, thanks. And then the question, in your presentation, you had that East County map with the noxious weed area, and Chris and I have talked about this before, but I was just wondering, could you just give us a brief kind of summary of that program? Because I know it was really active for a while, and then it kind of went down a little bit because our stakeholder partners weren't able maybe to meet our needs, or could you just give us an update on that?
Yeah, so our invasive weed program has been within the ag department for decades, you know, 70s and 80s. And we do a lot of work up in the Truckee area during the summertime, primarily on three species, musty cell, spot napweed, and Russian napweed. And we've got a long history as far as knowing which sites have been active. We have worked with our partners in the past, the Weed Warriors that have come out and helped and do some, you know, weed pull days. Our biggest struggle for our department individually has been staffing. We use seasonal temporary folks for the majority of our program, and that can be hit and miss. This year was great. 2023 was a great year. We were actually able to utilize the Skillbridge intern program, and we had a great hard worker who came in ready to go, and it's been, was awesome. Last year, we had two folks that, you know, left middle of the season and found employment elsewhere. So it's always been a struggle with seasonal staff, but we spend a lot of time up in the Truckee area, you know, in waterways or, you know, along the waterways, on private and public property, just trying to control that. Because what we have found is, you know, again, with folks coming from out of state, coming through Truckee, that's the first spot where, you know, the weeds are going to fall off the truck, you know, with the big haze coming in. And so we want to make sure that, that doesn't get any further into California, so we spend a lot of time up there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you for the update. I know there's a lot of people that were, the Weed Warriors program that were really into it, and so I'm glad they're helping. And this is a different, maybe offline question, but the ag station, when you come into Truckee, the scales, I've only seen it attended once in the last year. It's only been stopped. I'm just curious what's going on there.
Yeah, there's definitely a staffing shortage up there as well. That is something that we have expressed concerns with the Secretary of California Ag Department. Again, you know, this year with the fruit fly finds, and we haven't found any fruit flies in Nevada County, but in California, we have found over 200 fruit flies. Or a typical year, it's around 75. So there's definitely many pathways coming into California, and that is one of our concerns, is that Truckee border station. But right now, what we're, what we're hearing, it's a staff shortage, and they're actively trying to recruit and fill those positions.
Sure, yeah, understood. Just my last question, do we partner, or do Zerafis partner with cannabis compliance on the enforcement on the pesticide and herbicide or environmental impact issues? Do you guys join forces there?
Yeah, we definitely collaborate on a lot of issues when it comes to cannabis, primarily for us, pesticides, and weights and measures of scales. You know, Lucy is instrumental in the approval process from the department, ag department standpoint. And, you know, on some of those illegal grows, we have kind of consulted with cannabis compliance as well.
And EPA. Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, you know, we always look forward to the crop reporting, and I'm always impressed with how much more you guys do out there, you know, weigh the, the scale, the weighing of, what I want to say, that, that part of your, your program's amazing to me. I always appreciated it at the fairgrounds. Is there any public comment on this? Diana?
My name is Diana Gamzan, and I'm the Executive Director of the Nevada County Cannabis Alliance. We are a trade association representing over 160 licensed cannabis businesses in the county. Our mission is to provide education and representation to our local licensed cannabis industries, and our values are steeped in rural economic development, environmental stewardship, and craft farming. I want to express my appreciation to Chris and Lucy for their diligence in creating such a thorough report. What stands out to me with this crop report is we are so lucky to live in a community that provides so much support for our farmers and ranchers through the Farm Bureau, Sierra Harvest, the Nevada County Research Conservation District, and above all, our Agriculture Department. It is evident from this report that our agricultural sector in our community and throughout the state are facing hardships. Nearly every cot, nearly everything costs more to raise or grow. Costs of nutrients, hay, labor are all up, and all of those are, all those of us who are working in agriculture are feeling the pinch. Yes, it is true, cannabis is down nearly 45%, as noted in the crop report. Extreme oversupply of cannabis has led to declining prices, the lowest that we have ever seen, and small cannabis farmers are really feeling that impact significantly. The heavy rains last October caused farmers to harvest their crops before maturity, which decreases value, led to mold during the drying process, and crop destruction from heavy winds. Even though the value of cannabis is down, it remains a valuable crop as identified as identified by the 30 acres total in production that still represents about a third of the total value in the, of the traditional crop report. That is, that 30 acres is 0.9% of the total 3,313 acres that are harvested for traditional agriculture. Ultimately, cannabis is a commodity crop, and it is agriculture, and this is what agriculture does. It goes up and down. We are resilient, and we are hanging in there throughout the ebb and flows of the market. In addition to cannabis farmer, farming, our farmers are diversified and proudly offer other agricultural products and services. Yuba River Organics has a weekly stand at the Grass Valley Farmers Market. Enlightened Earth Herbs operates a medicinal and culinary herb nursery, which supplies Briar Patch and other businesses. And River Star Ranch offers grazing pastures to local livestock operations. Environmental stewardship continues to be at the forefront of our Nevada County cannabis farmers' practices, and I've reported this before, and I get so proud to report each time, but we have the highest percentage of organic cannabis farms certified by the Department of Food and Ag, California. Our cannabis farmers are not unlike any other farmers that we have in this county. They're farming for the love of farming, for their, to raise their young families, and they're hardworking farmers. Could I have one more minute? Is that possible? Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. Last month, Assembly Member Megan Dolly took a tour of our local cannabis businesses. We went to the Testing Lab, Higher Commitment, Emerald Bay Extracts, and High Hill Cannabis Farm. I want to just speak to the rep, the recognition that our local cannabis industry has in the greater statewide community. We are seen by our Sacramento elected officials as leaders for leading the movement on how our local government is proactively building regulations for small cannabis farmers. And that is being seen. Senator Alvarado Gill has expressed interest in coming to Nevada County to tour. Senator Dolly expressed an interest in bringing the Rural Caucus to Nevada County. And the DCC has been here to tour cannabis farms and has expressed an interest to come back. So we are, UC Berkeley just, just released a report analyzing local regulations throughout Northern California, with Nevada County as a statewide leader in properly regulating and enforcing cannabis regulation. So thank you all for your leadership. Thank you for Thomas Mayoly, for the work that he has been doing for our cannabis industry and his participation on the tour with Megan Dolly. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Is there any other public comment on this? Madam Clerk?
Chair Schofield, there are no callers or written comment.
No calls? Then I will close the public comment portion of this, and I'll entertain a motion.
Still moved.
Second?
Motion Supervisor Hook, Second Supervisor Hall, voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Just wanted to, I just want to tell you, I love the barn picture. If that barn could talk. That thing is well over 100 years old, and actually belongs to a Williamson Act family, the Barheids, who we just lost, Dave Barheight, who was an amazing advocate for agriculture in Nevada County. So that barn looks fabulous. Thank you for sharing that with people.
Did you see?
Yeah, it was a great article. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Lucy, for your work. All right, our next agenda item is an informational report regarding the new Nevada County accessory dwelling units, ADU guide, guidebook, and acceptance of the guidebook in substantially the form attached. Ryan and Marie?
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. I'd like to introduce Marie Maniscalco, an Associate Planner in our office, and was the project lead on this effort, and she'll be giving you the overview and staff report, and we'd be happy to answer any questions at the end. But with that, Marie?
Hi, good morning, Supervisors. I'm here to walk you through some of the great new resources that Nevada County has developed in promotion of accessory dwelling units. This project came about as a four-county partnership between some rural counties to help homeowners with resources that they need to build ADUs. The funding was provided by HCD's Regional Early Action Planning Funds. As part of this project, we partnered with the Community Planning Collaborative, a great consultant firm out of Berkeley, who has completed many of these guidebooks for other jurisdictions. Something I want to talk about for a moment here is why promote accessory dwelling units? We have found that a lot of people are interested in ADUs. They are a great solution to increasing housing in Nevada County. These units can be used for housing for families, for aging in place, for folks who want to downsize but stay on their parcels. We get a lot of inquiries at the planning counter about multi-generational living, so people who are interested in building an ADU for their adult kids or for their aging parents. This housing is great for local workers to help reduce commutes, keep our community closer together. They can be a source of extra income, rental income. And in talking with real estate agents, there's a high demand for parcels that have second units. They see improved property values there. What we were finding as well is that, you know, because ADUs are so widely allowed throughout Nevada County, a lot of people have interest in them but don't necessarily know where to start. We, the overall goal of this guidebook is really to take the mystery out of this process. We want to give, offer people as many resources as possible to get their questions answered ahead of time. We find that when we build that, those resources for residents, it saves them money in time. It's great for our staff. We have consistent information that's going from across all departments. This was a great effort actually between many different departments within the Community Development Agency. Per the state, we have regional housing needs allocations, and having additional ADUs built helps us to meet those needs. The benefits as well from these products and how they were developed is that we're able to update them as they, as new state laws come into play, as we update our code, which we did just recently, to make building ADUs even easier for folks. This is also a really helpful resource for all residential construction projects. So many, basically all of the steps that are included in this guidebook are going to be applicable for folks building their first homes as well. We took a lot of care in producing this resource, though we get a lot of great information just from staff interaction at the front counter. In addition to that, we did put out a survey to ask people, residents, about their opinions about ADUs, what information they think would be helpful. The Community Planning Collaborative consultant did some deep research across our current code, across our current resources that are available, and across all four of these counties. We held focus groups with staff across different agencies, with the contractors associations and the real estate professionals organizations in the areas. We had a thorough review by staff across various agencies in the Community Development Agency, and we also had a public comment period. We didn't receive any comments that required any edits to the guidebook, but we really appreciated the positive feedback that we got, as well as some general comments just about the cost and some of the barriers that people are still seeing. And we do hope that the resources provided in this guidebook and on the website will help address some of those concerns. The two main components of this project are the guidebook itself, which is an 88-page PDF. It's very thorough, very beautiful, walks step by step through the process. And then there's a website, which has all of the ADU guidebook resources, as well as some additional resources. I'm just going to run through a couple highlights. There's so much to this project. I highly encourage everyone to go check out the website, flip through the guidebook, but I'm just going to highlight a few components that I really love. The first here, this is just a screenshot of the opening page to the guidebook that gets you oriented to everything that's there. As you can see, we're talking about the six steps of building an ADU, or really, as I mentioned, a single-family home would apply as well. Talking about getting started, what the goals are of your project, what you're trying to accomplish, design considerations, learning the rules. So that includes, you know, your setbacks, your, the size limits, all these different components about what's allowed specific to ADUs. Budgeting and finance, design, including how to hire, what questions to ask an architect, how to hire an architect, permitting, that's a really thorough review of everything you need when you come into CDA to get your permits. And construction, you know, what to, questions to ask a potential contractor, how to keep track of their construction as they go, and a bonus section on move-in and renting your A piece of this project that I think will be especially helpful for the community and for staff members is all of these ADU exercises. In specific, I want to highlight these pages, like the one you see on the right, which are questions for each of the different departments. So when someone comes in, it's a really a one-stop guide. They could actually even pull this up on their phone, or a tablet, or print it out and take notes on it. And what we really hope is that's that, really that one-stop shop for everything they need to know from CDA. This accessory dwelling unit cost calculator, which is on the website, is an extremely valuable resource. Of course, you know, we get this question a lot at the counter, well, how much is it going to cost? And that's not something that we have, you know, the wherewithal to answer as staff members here. And so this website, we'll be really excited to direct people there. It walks through a bunch of different inputs, including if they're doing new construction, converting a part of their house, how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms, the square footage is, what they think they're going to get for rent, tons of information to give them just a rough idea of the budget, how long it will take to pay off if they're taking a loan, what kind of impact it'll have to their property values. It's a really thorough financial resource. I also love the ADU spotlight stories that were created as part of this project. There are four different residents from the region that were interviewed, three of them from Nevada County. There are photos of their units, stats on the project that they developed, as well as 360-degree virtual tours. I don't know if any of you have seen those, sometimes you see them as part of real estate listings, but you can actually virtually walk into the space and see what it's like to say, okay, this is a thousand square feet, and actually, wow, this seems really comfortable and really doable for my family. There is a page with dozens of example floor plans for ADUs, again, just helping people to get inspired, to have them feel like this is a really attainable and wonderful thing they can do for their property. We have a new handout. I just wanted to highlight this also as an example of all of the beautiful design work that our consultant team did for this project, and this is what we're going to be excited to be handing out at the planning counter going forward. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Marie. All right, do you want to start this?
Sure. Thank you so much. I got the pamphlet in my inbox, I don't remember when, but I did get a chance, I actually read- But I did get a chance. I actually read through it, not every word, but I did look at the different sections you have. And it's just beautiful. I'm so pleased with how it came out. It looks good. There's lots of good information. And it's easy to understand. It's easy to figure out where to go next. I love the, that part that you showed in the back where you're prompting people with the questions they're going to have to ask. That is so, so useful. Because you don't know what you need, what you need to know until you go in and find out that you didn't get that information often. So I think it's just really, really well done, very well researched clearly. I think it's going to address so much of what people want to know. And it's a beautiful product. I'm just really, really happy. So thank you to everyone for doing that. And I can't wait to get some extra copies and hand it out to people who've been asking me questions about it.
Before I go on, I see we have a guest. Brandy, and perhaps Brandy would like to make some comments. I assume this would be more about working with the three counties. Am I correct?
Sure, yeah. Brandy was the project manager for this effort and coordinated all four of our counties through this whole process. So she's here to answer any questions. And Brandy, if you wanted to say something, please feel free.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. This was a delight to work on with you all and your wonderful team. I'm a principal at Community Planning Collaborative, and I have been working on ADU products for almost a decade. And this was one of the most robust and interesting ones we've ever done. And it was, it was a real big joy to bring this to you all. So we hope you love it as much as we are as proud of it.
Very good. Thank you, Brandy. Thank you for being with us. Hardy?
I don't have too many questions. It's a great, great work, and I followed the process and asked questions as we went. So when we got here, I kind of, my questions have already been answered, but job well done. I really like it. I do think it's kind of the future of some of our housing crisis that we're struggling with. I think in conjunction with our free plan set, the plan sets that people can get, they're discounted, they're not free. But it is really going to make a change in the way we think about solving our housing needs. So I'm really happy about that. I just, one quick question on the septic side. I know that there's been a lot of discussion. It seems to be, at least in my case and in a lot of my constituents, are limited by the septic application as it comes to the ADU and other things. Does the ADU require its own septic system or enhancements to a typical, like if you have a 3-2 house and you put an ADU in, would they're typically, would they be required to upgrade their septic system?
It depends on the capacity of the existing system. Some current code change goes into effect on Thursday. No longer requires a separate tank for the ADU if the current tank has capacity. We do find that septic systems can tend to be the bottleneck for ADU builds. But as long as there is capacity, then no other work will be needed. But if the current system can say it only supports a three-bedroom, two-bath house, and you've got, you're adding another bedroom as an ADU, you may have to expand the system.
Okay. And then there was some California legislation that prevented certain jurisdictions from taking action against ADUs. Are ADUs essentially permitted within most jurisdictions? HOAs and things like that?
So, yes, HOAs no longer have the capacity to disbar ADUs. So even if you are in a homeowner's association that has CCNRs that say no second units, the state has come down and said that's not applicable, and you may develop a second unit on your property.
And then just the last, in, last piece. Do you have any plans to, like, are there any specific promotional programs or strategies that you're going to use to try and get this out and send it out?
We have a list that we've been keeping throughout this process of folks who are interested. We've also found that the Contractors Association and the Nevada County Association of Realtors are great partners in disseminating this information. And again, yeah, happy to hand them out at the counter everywhere. We've also been working with Lisa Renner and the PIO team to get this out.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good job.
Lisa?
Great. This is an amazing book that you put out. It's, I think, really helpful. A couple of questions. If someone purchases the plans that, the pre-done plans that we're doing, does that eliminate some of the need for some of the, the professionals that you have? I mean, are they already stamped by an engineer and an architect? So you don't, when you submit it, you don't have to go and have those additional stamps done?
Correct. So those plans that are available through the Master Plans Program that our Building Department headed up, they are already stamped by architects and engineers. You will still need a site plan. So you'll need a map showing your entire parcel, where your septic system is going to go, how your driveway accesses the ADU, and some other property-specific details. There's a huge cost savings there by using those plans.
Yeah, I think that's a, I think that's a really valuable tool for the building industry. Because when you start hiring all those professionals that you have to go through, architecture, structural engineer, geotechnical, it adds up. So I think $400 a square foot is pretty reasonable estimate of the costs. It seems it's a lot. But I think that's what people are looking for now, or looking at now when they go to build a second unit. So while I know we're looking at this to hopefully provide some affordable-type housing, it's really going to be a function of how expensive it is for somebody to build the, the unit. So I'm, I'm really pleased to see this. I think that the document is done so people can easily read it. I like your suggestion that people hire professionals because in the long run, I believe that does save you money versus trying to do it yourself. Although, you have made this possible, that a homeowner could do this themselves. So, great job. I look forward to six months or 12 months from now having you guys come back and report how many permits have been applied for and if people are really using this as a tool to provide some additional housing in the community. Thank you.
I don't really have any more questions because they kind of asked. But this, the pamphlet turned out, or the, it's way more beautiful than I thought and have such good explanation. I think that's the big thing I like, that you could use this for building your first home. You know, because that's a big, I mean, for me, if I was going to do that, I, we've talked about that, I want to be held my hand through it, right? This really gave you a real basic overview, like, step-by-step. So actually, I really got a lot out of reading it. So really appreciate the work. This took a little bit of time. I kept thinking, when is this going to get done? But now with the end results, it was the time and the effort that went into this is really, really well done. So thank you. Good presentation. Hope to see people come and use it. Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was impressed with the quality of the program or of the, the project that you could go with. I was very impressed with that. I'm curious though, on the survey part of it, and I think a lot of it goes back to what Hardy was asking on septic. On the survey part, was there, were there other suggestions that said, man, this is maybe a better way we could go, but we're kind of restricted by state requirements and even county requirements? I guess what I'm asking is this, if we approve this, this is going to be what it takes to get an ADU in Nevada County. Are we going to be able to continue to look at this? Because the bottom line is, it's still expensive. So, that question?
Yeah, absolutely. What's really great about what Community Planning Collaborative has put together for us is, one, they are, because they do so much work across the state with ADUs, everything that's in here is the most up-to-date and current information. And they've also left these documents and very thorough instruction sheets for us about how to update them as we continue to evolve the code and continue to make it easier for people to develop housing in Nevada County.
And, you know, I look at it too. It's one, one thing to be building an ADU for rental purposes, and I suspect most everybody is doing that, except... I look at families and where you perhaps have an elderly grandparent that maybe you want to work into your home. So if you have that three-bedroom home where a septic would take that, but you really don't want grandma and grandpa living right in that home, are you able to adjust that to where you say, okay, we're not going to use this room for a bedroom? We'll use it for an office, whatever you want to call it? And then proceed with something like this without having to expand the septic system?
We do see that that is a solution that can be attained in collaboration with the Building Department. You would pull a permit to convert one of the bedrooms into your house into another use, thereby freeing up basically a bedroom capacity in your septic system. And we do see, I will say, I actually, just from experience at the front counter, the Planning Department, we see actually the vast majority of people who are interested in building ADUs are for family purposes, not so much for rentals.
Really? That's wonderful. That's very good. Very good. Excellent report. Thank you for the, the information. Is there any public comment on this item?
I hope my kids want to build me one.
Madam Clerk, is there any calls?
Chair Schofield, we do have a caller for this item.
Please bring the caller in.
Great, thank you.
Hi, Board of Supervisors, Matthew Coulter. Yeah, nice brochure, like all of the printing the county does, is very nice. And I look forward to grabbing a copy of the crop report, as well as this one. Because I do read these things. I know that few people do, because they just get scattered around the lobby. But my point in calling is that the reality is that people are renting right now, you can go look at our local rentals, and a lot of tough sheds are being rented in backyards. Now, these are tough sheds, garden sheds, that are now houses. And that's what we're dealing with. It's way different than what you guys deal with, I guess, on a daily basis. But that's the reality of the situation. People are renting, just today on Ridge Road in Grass Valley, the police did a raid, a bunch of trailers, CPS, kids went, five adults, you know? Like, people are living in squalor, basically, because they're getting pushed out of their affordable housing and being forced to live in really rough conditions, shall I say. And it's sad, because, I mean, I look at these beautiful structures that you guys look at in these brochures, and yes, anybody in their right mind would want to live in one of those. But the reality is that society can't afford that. So we really need to adjust our government to the needs of society. Instead of saying, yes, this looks good, it's a nice magazine picture, yet, how many will be built? I want to know some numbers. And when I hear the board ask questions to the departments, I'd like to hear the answers in a follow-up, like in the next meeting or in a report or some way. Because these questions, and some of them are important, get asked, they never get answered. There's never an answer to the question. I've been following this topic since Kay Housing. Kay Housing, right? Maybe Ed remembers that. That's probably the only person that does in the county. So this is where we're at. We're at Kay Housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Some good points there. Is there any other callers?
No, Chair.
Very good. Anybody again on the chambers? Seeing that, I will close the public comment portion. Thank you very much for the report. And I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout?
Second.
Second Supervisor Hall, and I believe I'll take a roll call vote on this one, Madam Clerk.
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes, thank you. I'll be talking with you, Marie. All right. Oh, yes, you certainly may. Supervisor Hall, we will take a five-minute break. We'll reconvene this meeting of the Board of Supervisors, the regular... We'll reconvene this meeting of the Board of Supervisors, the regular meeting of October 10th, 2023, and our next agenda item is the acceptance of the presentation to inform the Board of Supervisors on results of the Impact Assessment Study for Pioneer Community Energy. Allison?
Morning, Chair, members of the board. I'd like to introduce Caleb Dartik, the Assistant CEO, who's going to be introducing our panel this morning. We're prepared to give you an update on Pioneer Energy and what that looks like for Nevada County. So, thank you, Caleb.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Chair and Board members. And my name is Caleb Dartik, Assistant CEO, and because we have so many guests, I think we will, I will step back and turn it immediately over to our analyst, Amanda Stewart.
Morning, Chair Schofield, members of the board. My name is Mandy Stewart. I'm an analyst with the county, supporting both the executive office as well as the Board of Supervisors. As Caleb mentioned, we are here today to share with you the results of the Impact Assessment Study that we conducted in partnership with Pioneer Community Energy to evaluate the financial implications of Nevada County joining the Pioneer Community Energy Community Choice Aggregation Program. As we shared with you in our previous presentation on August 8th, the Impact Assessment Study serves to identify the power demand for Nevada County customers, as well as evaluate the costs associated with procuring sufficient power to meet the county's energy needs. With us today are members of the Pioneer Community Energy Team, including board members and staff, as well as representatives from Pacific Energy Advisors, the third-party consultant engaged to complete the impact assessment. I will introduce the members, starting, I guess, just in order of where they're sitting. We have Alice Dodin-Cavio, she is the Board Chair of Pioneer Community Energy, as well as the Mayor of Auburn. We have Don Eckert, Executive Director of Pioneer Community Energy. Directly to my left, we have Kirby Dussel, who is a Vice President with Pacific Energy Advisors. And then behind the Pioneer team on the left, we have Gina Stassi-Vanacore, who is the Director of Public Affairs and Marketing, as well as Sam King, the Chief Operating Officer for Pioneer Community Energy. Once we have reviewed the study, we will discuss options for next steps and ask for board direction in regards to those next steps. I will now turn the presentation over to Pioneer Community Energy and Pacific Energy Advisors.
Okay, thank you, Mandy. Can you hear me okay? Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow Board members. Thanks for having us back today, and as Mandy mentioned, we'll be going through a review of the results of the Impact Assessment Study, and again, looking for a direction, as Mandy pointed out. So, next slide, please. Or do I control the next slide, or? Oh, here we go. Perfect. Thank you. So, it's kind of a roadmap of what we talked about last time we were here. So, everything started in May, when we talked with the county staff into commissioning an Impact Assessment Study, and we'll go into that in a moment. Then in the last three months or so, we've been out in the community, as well as meeting with this board back in August. We then presented the results of the Impact Assessment Study with our Pioneer Board, as well as get direction from the Pioneer Board, which we'll apprise you of that today. And that's where it leads us right now to today, is talking about the Impact Assessment Study and then providing direction. If we want to move forward, this lays out the steps of a lot of activity over the next couple of months, in November, to ultimately file an implementation plan with CPUC in December, and we look forward then to serving in 2025. Next slide, please. So what is an Impact Assessment Study? It is really what the name is. What the study does is it shows the impact to the JPA of bringing on new ratepayers or a new territory and new load. And it's a standard practice amongst all CCAs to conduct this when considering expansion. And essentially, it compares the cost of service, if you will, to serve the new ratepayers with projected existing rates at the time of the expansion, to see if there's a subsidization issue or not. In most years, it's been more of a formality. This year, it's not, and I suspect over the next couple of years, these are not formalities based on the state of the power supply market, and we'll get into those details in a moment. But it does become a key milestone in the expansion process. So even though we were communicating out there in the community, we were upfront with staff that this results from the Impact Assessment Study was going to be a very important decision point in the process. So, next slide, please. So, the cost of service, and you're going to see this in a moment with Kirby Dussel from Pacific Energy Advisors, we'll go through that, but it's very much impacted by the state of the market and power supply. And for most of us, we turn on our switch, and that's our power supply, you don't really think anything more of it. There's many inputs into the power supply budget, if you will, but the three main ones we'll cover here is the actual energy itself, the electrons that flow in the system, that's what we're all familiar with. There hasn't been much of a change between this year and last year in pricing of the actual energy. So this is not a driver for the discussion today, but the other two items are. So on renewable energy credits, these are what we use to affirm our purchase of renewable energy that we then submit to the state for our renewable portfolio standards reporting. So we have the energy piece of it, and then we also have the renewable energy credit that's associated with that energy. And this market has exploded over the last six months or so. And as we get closer to 2030, where every load-serving entity is going to be at least 60% renewable in their portfolio, many load-serving entities have accelerated that and wanted to be 90%, 100% renewable. The issue we're having is, and you're having, you're hearing this issue in probably other procurement issues with the county, is it's always, we're still dealing with the pandemic, supply chain issues. So you're having a lot of these projects that were supposed to be online next year, the year after, being delayed for supply chain issues. We've had a couple of projects as well that have asked for extensions. You have that delay in supply, but you have this increased demand, it's pushing up pricing. The other major component that's driving these numbers is resource adequacy. So this is a regulatory construct, if you will, that's intended to promote grid reliability. So what we do is we need to go out there into the field and procure with usually fossil fuel plants to make sure that we have enough capacity to meet our peak demand, as well as a 15% margin above that. And there's several issues that's infecting this market as well. So you've got a tug of war right now with the state, where they don't want to have any more new fossil fuel plants, but you also want to keep the lights on, and so there's that conflict there. We've seen with the extreme weather events, this summer was not an example, but the last couple of years, we have, and so the state has, or the CPUC has changed requirements on how much reserves, especially the investor-owned utilities, need to have. You're also seeing the same delayed projects, if you will, impacting the renewable side of it, as well as resource adequacy. And we've also seen the CPUC lower the credit given to renewable energy towards capacity. So in essence, these two markets are right now, renewable energy and resource adequacy are out of balance between much larger demand versus a small supply. We think in time, it's going to get in sync, but right now, it's not. So with that, I'm going to hand this over to Kirby Dussel to go through the Impact Assessment Study results, and then we'll come back to wrap this up. Thank you.
Thanks, Non, and good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. Let's go ahead and advance to the next slide here. Perfect. So when looking at an expansion analysis such as this, the analysis really starts with understanding the customer base that will be included or added to the existing operation. And in this case, we looked at historical usage of Nevada County customers across the typical rate designations that you see here, starting with residential, working on down through commercial, and then ultimately through the agricultural and street lighting account designations. It's very important to understand the manner in which your customers typically use power, because that's a large driver of the revenues that are collected, ultimately, that fund the organization, in this case, the expansion, as well as the cost to serve those customers. And so when looking at this particular piece of the puzzle, you can see here that we've got about 32,000 additional accounts that could be served if Pioneer Community Energy added Nevada County to its customer base. Those customers would use an additional 300,000-plus megawatt hours a year. That reflects about a 17% increase in energy usage relative to Pioneer's current customer base, and about a 20% increase in customer accounts relative to Pioneer's current customer base. And you can see on the bar charts, on the right-hand side here of the slide, how it is that the relationship of those different customer bases stacks up. So Pioneer's existing, of course, being the taller orange-shaded bar, and then Nevada County customers being the blue bar there. So anyway, that's where this particular analysis starts, is understanding historical energy usage, and then bringing that in as a component of the financial evaluation that follows. If we can go ahead and advance the deck here. Perfect. One more little look here at the customer compositions. You can see that they are a little bit different. So looking at the set of bars on the left side of the chart, you can see the relationship of the residential customer classification in Pioneer's existing customer base, makes up about 56% of Pioneer's existing customer base, whereas the Nevada County customer base is more heavily residential, at over 80%. And then, of course, the inverse is also true. So we have slightly higher, in the case of the non-residential accounts for Pioneer, and then lower there for the non-residential accounts in Nevada County. So it's important to understand this, because oftentimes incorporating diversity in a new customer base that's being added to an existing utility, such as Pioneer Community Energy, provides a benefit, right? It changes the manner in which power is used on an aggregate basis, and tends to make that a bit flatter, which makes it easier to plan for and procure around. So that's typically a benefit. So when we see things like this, this is generally positive. Next slide, please. All right, so as with any analysis, there are a number of assumptions that are folded in to the evaluation. Here are a few key ones that we'd like to highlight for you. In terms of the start date for customer service, we looked at a January 2025 start date for Nevada County customers. You might ask, well, why are we looking so far out into the future, and what's special about January 2025? It's important to note that within the CCA, or Community Choice Aggregation space, there are a number of rules that apply, and in the case of expansion activities or new CCA launches, there's a bit of a waiting period that applies from the time when an implementation plan goes in. So this is basically the point at which a CCA organization will inform the state that it intends to launch or expand its existing operation. And if we were to submit an implementation plan by the end of 2023, the soonest we could launch or add Nevada County customers is January of 2025. So that was an underlying assumption in this particular analysis. This could be deferred to optimize economics, but for the sake of this particular evaluation, we did target January 2025 as a key assumption. Also, there are commonly some customers that decide to basically vacate the opportunity to be served by the CCA organization, or opt out, as it's known, and we applied a customer participation rate of 90%, which pretty well tracks what we've observed elsewhere in the state as far as CCA participation is concerned. As far as revenues, this was an assumption that was based on existing rates for Pioneer escalated out into the future, and in this case, of course, we started the collection of those rates in 2025, along with the inclusion of Nevada County customers. And then there are, of course, various costs, and Mr. Eckert already commented on a couple of those costs that were very impactful in this analysis, and we'll look at those a little bit more closely in the slides that follow. So anyway, we can go ahead and advance the deck here, and look at those costs that I just referred to. So looking a little bit more closely at resource adequacy and renewable energy, which were two of the key items that Mr. Eckert already highlighted as being very impactful in this evaluation, you can see some very stark changes that occurred, and have occurred, over the last, say, year to two years. And what you can observe here, just year-over-year, August of 2022 to August of 2023, is a significant upward shift in costs for this key compliance product that must be procured by all load-serving entities in the state of California. And in fact, we've even seen within the last week, a further increase in these prices. So this is a bit dynamic and a little unprecedented, quite honestly. The reason for this upward pressure on pricing, Mr. Eckert alluded to this as well, there are projects that have been delayed as a result of the pandemic, various supply chain constraints that have forced these projects to push out their commercial operation deadlines, and also some policy mandates that have been handed down by the state, essentially mandating additional capacity procurement to proactively address some planned attrition in our existing generation fleet. So there have been a number of facilities, particularly coastal natural gas plants, and also nuclear generating facilities in the state of California, that have been targeted to come offline, and as a result, the state has handed down these incremental procurement mandates that have forced all suppliers of energy to California customers into the market to buy these products at the same time, which has created a bit of a bottleneck. Kind of basic economics are at play, and so prices have been pushed up as a result of there being so much kind of a forced increase in demand. On the renewable energy side of things, the effects are a little less clear, but still somewhat related to the delays that projects have incurred as a result of the pandemic and the supply chain constraints, and various tariff considerations that have affected some of the new supply that was planned to come online. There have also been circumstances where some very large buyers of renewable energy have come into 2023 with larger short positions, or open positions, that they needed to fill relative to historical norms. And that kind of instant interest, if you will, from these very large buyers has pushed prices up quite a bit, and we've definitely seen historical all-time highs in renewable energy. And again, I will tell you that within the last, say, week to two weeks, prices have even pushed up a bit beyond what you see here in the bar charts. It's also important to note that what you see reflected here in the graphic is a blending of three different renewable energy products that are allowed for use under California's Renewables Portfolio Standard Compliance Program. These different products are either limited or capped out in terms of how much you can buy, or there's a minimum requirement in other cases, but just for the sake of understanding what you're looking at here, this is a blending of three different products, each of which has its own kind of cost level. So just kind of keep that in mind. But in any case, we folded these assumptions into the evaluation, and they did play heavily in the financial outcomes that were characterized in the results that we'll talk about here in just a minute. All right, so looking at the trajectory of the economic impacts here, beginning in fiscal year 2025 and continuing through fiscal year 2028, you can see that in the six-month period that represents the back end of fiscal year 2025, so that's the very beginning of service to Nevada County customers, there's a very small financial benefit. But as additional procurement is needed going out into the future at these very high costs that we've referenced, you can see that that impact to Pioneer Community Energy turns negative very quickly and rather substantially. The top portion here of the two tables that you see, this is characterizing the kind of notional value of the impact. You can see that characterized there in all those units of measurement, or in millions of dollars. And then the bottom is all on an average basis, so dollars per megawatt hour. And of course, you know, any incident like this begs the question, well, what do we do about the financial drag that might come on Pioneer Community Energy, and how do we deal with that? What do we need to do with rates, and so on and so forth? And one of the challenges in understanding and pinpointing what those eventual impacts might be is that in a commodity-driven market, like the electric power sector, it's very, it's virtually impossible to know, unless we're engaging in the procurement right now, what those costs will be in the future when we actually go out and visit the market to make those purchases. And then, of course, we have the question of what are the utility rates going to be in 2025? We'll soon have a much better understanding of what rates will be in 2024, but there still will be a bit of time until we fully understand what rates will be at the potential start point for service to Nevada County customers. And then just recapping the conclusions, unfortunately, the financial results that were projected through this evaluation were negative largely, in absent a very sharp decrease in wholesale power were negative largely in absent a very sharp decrease in wholesale power prices. We would expect, you know, something in the range of about 30%, a 30% reduction that is, to need to occur in order for there to be kind of flat impacts, if you will. We don't expect that inflection point to occur without some very significant changes in a downward direction for wholesale power prices. And of course, you know, change is kind of inevitable in this business. As I mentioned, this is a commodity-driven market that we live in in California's electric utility industry. And things can change very suddenly and significantly. And it could be the case that this high environment that we're in right now pivots in a positive direction and allows the inclusion of these customers to occur at virtually no impact at all to the organization. So it's really kind of up in the air at this point and a little too early to tell. But nonetheless, those are the results of the analysis that were completed and we wanted to share those with you today.
Thank you, Kirby. We have a few more slides. So some of you represent Grass Valley and Nevada City. What happens with them? So they joined our JPA. They sit on our board now back in May of 2023. And we have Gary Peterson and Tom Ivey. And we are still scheduled to provide service for them, January 2024. And I just want to emphasize for Nevada City and Grass Valley that they are not impacted. They will receive the same generation rate that our existing ratepayers receive. Couple of reasons for that. One is the Nevada City Grass Valley load was about 6% what we currently have. Nevada County is going to be about 20%. And that difference meaning that it's a much smaller portfolio to fill and we could do that quickly. Also, when the CPUC gave the approval, we moved in March of this year. And really, most of the price damage has happened since then. So when we closed the positions with Nevada City Grass Valley, since that time, prices have gone up 400%. So that's why, at least for Nevada City and Grass Valley, they will be under the same rate schedule as our existing ratepayers. And then on the next slide, I could talk about what our board direction is based on these results, but fortunately, I have our board chair here. So I'm going to hand this over to our board chair, Alice.
Thank you very much. Alice Dowden Calvio, Chair of Pioneer Community Energy and also Mayor of the City of Auburn. My pleasure to be here before you again, but certainly under different circumstances, of course, unfortunately. So the Board of Directors received the same presentation at our last meeting and we deliberated over this issue. And really, the bottom line for Pioneer is that we want to ensure that we are not subsidizing rates on our current ratepayers. And, you know, it's tremendously unfortunate that the impact assessment study was so unfavorable. You know, this is not something that we anticipated happening. We got ahead of the train a little bit, if you will, doing some community outreach and so forth at the request of the board. And I think that we were all very cautiously optimistic that we would not have the results that we are facing at this point in time. With that said, normally, we wouldn't be out ahead of the train. And if, when we would receive something like this, it would just be a no-go for the board because it would be detrimental to our current ratepayers. But because we have established a relationship with Nevada County, you know, we are here today presenting this information to you, there are options. But the reality is that if Nevada County wants to come in at this time, there would, you should absolutely expect to receive a different generation rate applied to the ratepayers for the unincorporated part of Nevada County. What that would be is unknown at this time. You know, again, we're dealing with the market and it's just impossible to say. But the Board of Directors for Pioneer felt very strongly that it would be inappropriate for the current ratepayers to subsidize that additional cost. As you heard, power is 400% more now. And so there would be the expectation that Nevada County would have an additional, it's not really a fee, we kind of named it a rate adder. What did we call it? Different rate. We had a little technical term for it. But really, it is a different rate because it's that generation rate is different for Nevada County unincorporated. And again, this is really not-for-profit for Pioneer. We are a nonprofit entity. It's just to cover those costs to serve you. PG&E is in the same market as we are. And while we can't guarantee that our rates are always less than PG&E, we are confident that we'll have a stable and competitive rate because we don't have the large administrative burden that PG&E does. And that is something that, you know, for myself as chair and for our board, having stable rates, you know, we really strive to ensure that our rates are lower than PG&E. We're very proud of the fact that Placer County customers are 15%. And I think Eldorado is 19 and a half percent. And we're very proud of that. So we work very hard to ensure that happens. We can't always guarantee it, of course. If the county waits to decide until next year to look at this, things might be different. Then we would be committed to having discussions next year. But we would have to conduct another impact assessment study at that time because the market is so volatile. So I know you have a lot to think about. I wish that I had, I wish that we had better news to deliver to you. But we just want to be very straightforward with you. And we are here today because we've had these initial discussions with you. If we were under different circumstance with a different jurisdiction where we hadn't had those initial discussions, it just would have been a decision we would have made and we just would have stopped the process. But you do have a lot to think about. And we respect whatever decision that you have to make at this point in time. And you understand where we are. We would open, you know, I'm open to any questions that you might have. Don, do you have anything else you want to add?
I think we just have one more slide to wrap this up. And it's a good lead into what Alice just talked about, which is the decision. And I think it's, there's no wrong answer here. So it's an easy decision and that there's no wrong answer. It's also difficult. If the uncertainty of having a different rate and entering this at this time with the state of the power supply market, it's going to provide too much anxiety, too much uncertainty to deal with. As Alice pointed out, we can just end the process and just restart this again next year. I would say we want to definitely do the impact assessment study again next year and start the outreach after that if the results are good because I think this market's going to be a little bit unpredictable for a while. And we would then commit to, if things worked out next year, a start date of 2026 to serve the county.
I think, Don, also, it's important to say that it doesn't have to be just next year. I mean, it could be two years from now. I mean, really, that's driven by the board. And so I just, I just want to throw that out there, too. It's not just, okay, just next year and that's it. I mean, we will continue to pursue expansion, you know, where it makes sense for us with Pioneer. That's an ongoing thing, you know, as we continue to exist, so.
Thank you, Alice. Because we line up in everything else. We're like-minded in everything except this study came back unfavorable. So the other option is the maintaining the course of which if we can get a general direction today, if you want to stay in the game, then I would look at this as a long-term play in that you're joining this because you wanted to have a say in your energy future. You wanted to have local projects. You wanted programs. You wanted control and you wanted choice to your citizens. All that is still valid. It just means that there would be a later start date, October 2025, to avoid the summer pricing for 25, as well as acceptance that we may have to have a different rate for you to cover the cost of service.
I think we will have to. I just want to make sure it's clear that I don't want anyone to think that. I cannot imagine in all, and I'm just, I mean, as an elected official, I appreciate, we want to be straightforward and upfront and transparent in that. But I don't see the rates going down so substantially that we wouldn't have to have some kind of a different rate. It might not be as much, but I just, I just need to be upfront.
Yeah, like everything else, the prices come down a lot slower than they go up. So I would say that if you're on a different rate, we do have a, what we call a five-year hedging strategy where we're putting positions out every quarter, looking out five years. That different rate wouldn't go past five years. We hope it would be less, but it certainly wouldn't go past. That is, at some point, you're going to be at the average cost with everyone else. With that, I believe that's, oh, no, one more slide. Thank you. So this is, again, not an action item today. However, we are looking for a general direction because if we want to move forward and stay in this game, I've got to get several meetings lined up with our member agencies to, as far as the amendment to the JPA process and probably need to start that about two weeks from today. So, which means I got to start getting on their agendas really by tomorrow. So anyway, that's where we're at and thank you for your time. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
If I may, real quick, before questions. Thank you, Don. Thank you, Alice. Thank you, Kirby, for that presentation. It was comprehensive and very informative. Thank you, Alice, as well for outlining the option given by the Pioneer Board. I just want to reiterate that if we do decide to pause today, if you give us direction to pause, the option to move forward is still always on the table. We can reevaluate our options next year with the possibility of coming online as soon as January of 2026 was just three months behind the October 2025 date of staying the course. So, you know, while we're on pause, maybe the option is still on the table and I want to make that clear to all of you that we can continue to move forward just maybe at a different time. And I'll leave it open for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, you want to start?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation and explaining all of that. My general kind of attitude towards this would be to put it on pause and see what happens next year. I don't think that we can put ourselves in a position of having to subsidize this, you know, commit county funds. And I think it's also really difficult because you don't know how much it's going to be. I think that's the biggest question I've been asked by people about Pioneer is, is there going to be a cost savings? And people are very concerned with the dollar amount. So from my perspective, I actually live in the city of Grass Valley, so I will be going to Pioneer in January when the city starts with them. So I'll have some real-world experience and I'll be able to compare my bills from PG&E from the previous year to actually see if there's a cost savings and what the advantages or disadvantages might be. So I'm looking forward to that and having some experience with it to bring back to us next year if we do take this up again.
I'm going to jump to Heidi, another, she has Nevada City.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, yeah, thank you for the presentation and all the information. It was very helpful, very straightforward. And I think that, yeah, the decision is for us is going to be fairly obvious. But I have two questions, just so I understand better how this works. The first one is more of a clarification. So the rates are going up for renewable energy on the market where you have to go out and purchase that at higher rates. Clearly, those higher rates would be reflected in the prices we would then pay. Why are they not also reflected in your existing customers? Is that because you already have contracts in place for years, so many years forward? Can you just explain that to me a little bit better?
Yes, so we have a combination of long-term contracts that go several years out and we got those prices locked in. Plus, we have a five-year hedging strategy. So even though we're seeing this recent 400% jump in prices, we put a lot of those positions on two, three years ago at the time. And each year, we put it on, rolling out the next five years. So it's really because of our hedging that it protects us from these price spikes on the rates.
So you're going to be taking a hit anyway with your existing customers, then?
Well, a lot, most of this load is already under contract. However, in time, as these positions roll off and if this market stays the same, we would be also looking at price pressure on our existing ratepayers. The difference, when you talk about cost savings, PG&E is in the same market, I think Alice touched on this. So they're also in the same arena that we are. And if, I always feel that we're going to be, we're going to be super competitive because of our.
We're lean and mean.
There you go.
We're not mean, but we're lean.
Thank you. So I always feel like even if our rates are going up because of price pressures, our cost savings can still be there to PG&E.
Thank you. Yeah, and that's my second question. And I think we don't have an answer for that. But that's what makes this hard for me is that PG&E, the rates are going to go up for you, the rates are going to go up for PG&E. I mean, they're going to have to raise the rates. So either way, whether we go with you or not, we're going to see and raise and raise. And if you guys are doing the good job that you look like you're doing, that raise in rates will be less potentially with Pioneer than with PG&E. But we'd have to gamble on that. And so it's just discouraging to me that we're going to pretty much have to make a decision, I'm assuming, to delay this. But, you know, we may be better off anyway if we go with you. And we don't know that, right?
Just a clarification on that. But actually, the new entrance to the market because of the procurement timing make the risk of Nevada County more than the existing PG&E customer base because they're already existing. They've already had futures for their contracts, which are described.
For Pioneer, not for PG&E necessarily.
That's what I'm saying. So PG&E wouldn't, would not move equally relative to the number of participants in our county. It would if the playing field was totally level and everybody was new. But that's not the case.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Because the customers are already existing with PG&E.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, I'd love to know that, if that's true, because I don't think we know that. They can, PG&E can raise the rates however high they need to across the board to meet that need.
Right, but they already have contracts in the future where our market entrants are all coming 100% into the system on contracts that are predicated with pricing today.
Right.
That's the difference.
Is that right, that PG&E already has contracts out in the future, too?
So they do. An example would be Eldorado County. So when they came over, PG&E had bought out for Eldorado County also years before. And they do the same types of hedging. However, because of our cost competitiveness in the two years that Eldorado's been with us, we've saved them around $50 million in utility bill savings. So even though Supervisor Bullock's correct, I still say we compete pretty well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I appreciate this. This was a good, we kind of looked in this. And I want to say, though, even though we've been in our public, I think that was really important that we started being transparent ahead of time. And so I appreciate, even though this has kind of got where it is, that the work that you were doing was really important to all the people that live here with questions and all the things that happen. So I want to thank you for that, even though sometimes this doesn't go the way we want. We wanted to hear from the people that we were going to serve, correct? So I do have questions. It's hard to watch because with the volatility in energy, I mean, we've been hearing PG&E saying that they're going to have a hard-pressed time meeting some of the requirements of the state coming up. And so that's a little bit concerning to me as well. And then watching what's happening in the CPUC is, so this is concerning. I mean, Heidi brings up some good points as like, are we going to be worse off in the long run? But we are going to know that. But what I do like, the fact is that we could look at this coming up another year possibly. It's not like this is the end of a conversation with Pioneer. This is like something that we can keep moving on in the future. It'd be kind of interesting to have Lisa actually and get to see what this starts like for her next year, you know, and how that plays out. So again, appreciate the openness and directness of this conversation. I think we had to have that and so appreciate it.
Yeah, I really appreciate it because this hasn't been a waste of time. We've built some great relationships with your staff, meeting out there in the community and presenting with all of you. So 100% agree.
I agree with my colleagues essentially speaking. Thanks for the presentation. It all made sense to me. The one piece that, it kind of a conceptual thing, but I mean, you could, everybody could opt out, right? If the power was drastically disparate, you could, pricing, you could just opt out.
That's the beauty of choice.
That's one thing to remember.
But it's harder to get, switch after you're in.
How much harder?
So if.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, if you opt out after the enrollment period, then you have to wait 12 months to opt back in.
I see, okay. Thanks for reminding me of that. And then the mechanism to restart is essentially we pick up where we left off, basically.
Yeah, so we would, we would be back in talks with the county probably next spring. And we would then conduct another impact assessment study and pretty much, yeah.
Yeah, really, we'd just go through the whole process of the impact assessment study again. You know, have those findings and then come before you with that and see where we are from a fiscal perspective. But I can tell you that, just speaking on behalf of the board, that, you know, again, making sure that the current ratepayers aren't subsidizing, that I can probably guarantee will still be a priority. But, and you have a lot, like I said, a lot to think of, think about. But there are still opportunities for discussion at a later date, absolutely, so.
And I think in the future.
And I think any future update to this evaluation would be a lot more expedient than the process that we've already undertaken because we kind of have the model built out for you all now.
Yeah.
So, it's really just a matter of uploading the current market pricing that's in place and running that through to generate the results.
That levels out what comes online. I mean, that'll be interesting, just as you said. It's kind of interesting to talk about all the entities that have starts and are kind of stalled with the process of equipment and all labor, everything that's going on. So, it'd be interesting to see how that actually stabilizes over the next 12 months.
Yeah. Question. On the, the renewable energy credit value, so are emerging markets or emerging providers really profiting off that? I mean, I'm just trying to follow where the money is going. Is that essentially the case?
Yeah, you want to talk a little bit about that one, Kirby?
Not really.
Yeah, so, there have definitely been some pivot points. I don't think it's necessarily new market entrants that are profiting. I think there's a lot of existing, very large-scale developers that are, that are benefiting from this, in theory. But it's also because, you know, that the costs are driven, the costs that are charged to the end user are driven by the costs on the supply side. So, I think, you know, what we've seen, even during the contracting process, we've seen a lot of changes over the last, say, 18 months, where there are a number of reopening provisions that have been inserted in these long-term contracts that didn't previously exist. Those are, of course, intended to address drastic changes in markets or costs of inputs or various other circumstances, taxation tariffs, what have you. And that's definitely something that's, that's very new, and there are triggers within those provisions that might inflate the price if inputs were to rise by more than X percent or something like that. So, I don't think it's necessarily that there are new entrants that are just jumping in and taking advantage of this, because that, that sort of on-ramp doesn't really exist. The interconnection process for new renewable generating projects is very long, it's very tedious, and it's very costly. And so, to have somebody just kind of come out of the ground, so to speak, and start that, that, that would be low probability of success. So, these are a lot of projects that are, been in the queue for some time and have been looking to interconnect, and whether it's a delay in the interconnection process or a delay in the infrastructure, you know, kind of acquisition process on the supply side, those are really what's driving the, the issues here.
Well, you know, if Nevada County was a member currently, I would, I would appreciate what's going on here. You're doing exactly what I expect you to do. And it would be quite easy to say, oh, well, if this is going to cost multi-millions of dollars, I'm sorry, see you later, Nevada County. The frustrating thing is that you've got two cities that are now members, and that the piece that I look at is, because I've been sold on what you guys have been saying, right? Maybe that was a bad thing getting in front of it, right? But I've been sold. So, now I'm thinking, wow, Grass Valley's going to be getting better rates than Alta Sierra will, and pretty soon, my constituents are going to be saying, hey, why is that? Now, maybe it's not enough that would even be noticed. I don't know that, but the perception to me right now is, and maybe this is our fault because we're going to have to say, if it's noticed, well, Grass Valley got in as members, we didn't. Well, why not? Well, I don't know. Maybe we didn't act fast enough. So, you can see the frustration here. And we don't know how much it's going to be. I mean, right? I mean, you don't know what an adder amount means, do we? No, we don't, so.
And that's the difficulty. We don't. If we had a magic hat or a crystal ball, we could tell you what that is, but we, we just don't know what that will be.
Right. But Grass Valley and Nevada City, they're, they're locked in with their being, right?
Yeah, they're, they're locked in. And I, I think that, you know, El Dorado County and Placer County did as well, is, they did have the advantage where the municipalities within the county, you know, and the county joined at the same time. So, you know, there wasn't that, that difference. But that doesn't always happen, so.
Yeah. Well, just feel my frustration with this, but I agree with my colleagues. We probably really don't have any other option except to say, okay, let's wait six months a year and see where we are. But, you guys really did a great job of selling us, I think. I think our particular meeting down in the South County was one of the best, one of the very best. Appreciate the effort you put into it, Mandy. I appreciate the team you guys have put into it.
And, and we appreciate that, too. I mean, again, as an elected, I totally get where you're coming from, and, and I honestly was talking to Dawn and said that, that was, this is my guess, is the position that you would, the direction that you would take, just, you know, again, understanding what we face with our constituents and so forth. So, you know, if you, if you do agree to pause, then, then we'll, we'll look forward to having discussions at a later date, so, yep.
Well, you know, Lake of the Pines think they live in Auburn anyways, so maybe we could make an exception there.
You know, I know that. It just, I, I will say to you, that is so interesting to me because people, oh, yeah, you know, I, I know Auburn. Lake of the Pines, like, oh, it's not even in the same county. It's, I don't know how that happened, you know? I'd love to know the history on that, how it's Auburn with a different zip code and a different county altogether. Don't know how that happened, but.
I'd love to change it. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none in the chambers, are there any?
Chair Schofield, there are no callers or written comment.
Very good. We will close the public comment portion of this. And while this is just a report, I do think that we're looking for direction here. So, I would entertain a motion, maybe a motion that would give some type of direction.
I'll, I'll make the motion to pause this for a year and, and see where, or however many months, actually deposit until the rates come down or until we can figure out what it's looking like and, and revisit when it looks better for us and for the, for Pioneer.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion. Supervisor Hall, seconded Supervisor Swarthout. Are you clear on that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chair.
Very good. Rule call, please.
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes. Thank you very much, you guys. All right, I'm going to move the agenda around a little bit. I'd like to do announcements before going into the closed session. And Heidi, I'm hoping you're prepared.
I am prepared, Ed. How did you know that? Thank you. We do have about four meetings to catch up on, so I will just mention a bunch of things and then maybe just spend a few minutes on one or two. Starting from back September, I've had some meetings with some members of the Nevada City Council on upcoming items on their agenda. Attended the RCRC and CSAC PG&E monthly call, that seems like so long ago now, where we're continuing to try to get them to work on clearing up leftover vegetation, and I'm seeing some action on there. I've seen some changes, so that's been very helpful. Had a meeting on what's going on out the Green Horn Creek area constituent, constituent concern that's been going on for years, but I, I wanted to get up to speed and feel confident that we're doing everything right and there's not much more we can do. Have had some conversations with the code compliance, code and compliance staff about code cases that have come to our attention, and they're, they're difficult, and I want, just want to appreciate how much time code and planning is having to spend on some of these cases to explain to the public and figure out how to make it work for everyone. I did attend the collaboration day, which was wonderful. Lots and lots of people came out, great representation. I did hear some comments that it was hard for people to attend during the day and maybe starting a little bit later and going a little bit later next time might, might be helpful for my constituents and others. We did have a planning meeting for the CSAC Agriculture, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee, and I raised the issue of fire insurance, and it looks like that committee will be bringing someone in to speak to that, as there seems to be widespread interest. Met with the Cannabis Alliance on issues not related to what we were hearing about today, but policy issues going forward. We had some calls on, on MHSA changes that are going through the legislature, that have gone through the legislature and that may show up on the ballot in November. We had calls beforehand. CSAC staff worked really diligently to try to get the state legislatures to address some of our concerns about that. And I think we're in a place where we're not thrilled, but we got a, a lot more things that we needed to make it work for counties. We had, I've had some conversations with staff about the Purdon and Edwards, what's going on there, and great hopes that some specific suggestions will come out in the master plan, but continue to hear from constituents about the difficulties about those areas. I did go on an Ag, Environment, Natural Resources visit to Turlock and Merced on water issues, which was fascinating, not, they don't, they have very different issues than we do, but really great to see how them, trying to address evaporation in their open canals, they're going to be doing some pilot work to see if they can control that. It would be very interesting for us to find out about that. I attended the presentation on evacuation that Shannon Moon did way back then at the Sierra College, which was really, really good and incredibly well-attended. So, I think that's a notice to us that we want to continue to educate people, get that information out. We might be good for this year, knock on wood, but for next year, or to keep working on evacuation, evacuation planning and, and connecting with my constituents on that. Went to a Master Gardeners 40th anniversary, birthday anniversary, which was fantastic. That's such a great program and group up there. It's up at the NID offices, and if you want to see what plants to plant that are native or how to make it work, there are tons of, there's lots of really good information up there, and they're upgrading all their signs and so on. Also, attended the Circle Cleanup Party, which was great, to see how much trash they brought in. I didn't get all the final results, but was well-attended. Attended a really great meeting with Chief Robitaille up at the Station 82. That's the fire station up by Five Mile House, and we met in, at the Five Mile House to talk about how they can adjust that, what kinds of work they can be doing up there to make it easier for all the recreation. And there's lots of really good ideas, and there's already some funding, and so, that's going to be a very exciting project to follow. It's slightly similar to what we're finding at Edwards Crossing and Purdon Crossing in just terms of trash and, and population. However, it's a little smaller of a problem, and we have the chief who's incredibly willing and has some funds and willing to just do it. So, I think we'll see progress there pretty fast. And then, the last big things I did was a Western Interregional States meeting for NACO that I went to in Wyoming. This is paid for by CSAC. And then, right afterwards, a CSAC retreat into Mecula. And the big takeaways, I suppose, on the WIR meeting, I, one aside, is that one of the things we did out there was we toured what was, is likely to be the biggest wind farm providing energy to the United States. It took like 18 years to bring, to bring it up. They're beginning construction, so their hope is it's going to come online in few years, probably five to six years. But what's fascinating about it is it's a private developer on his own private land. He runs cattle, and he has had oil extraction, and he's privately investing in wind because he sees that as a profit industry in the future. And not only that, he doesn't even have contracts set up to sell that wind. He's just taking the full risk on itself. So, that's kind of a, I think, a hopeful thing about renewable energy in the future. What was important, I think, for me to be there is this continued, this group continues to be fairly dominated by interests in sort of the middle western of, of the country and having California there and a few of my allies from Colorado and Oregon. We wanted to keep reminding them that forested land is also needing a lot of help and attention, and so, we continue to raise that as an issue. And so, that's been, I think, useful to be there for that. At the CSAC retreat afterwards, what, this was an executive team retreat, which is the first time I've attended that one. It was very, very good to have two full days of pretty open discussion with the executive team at CSAC and key staff, and then a closed sessions to look at sort of where, what's going on with executive director in the future and so on. Just briefly, the organization is poised to be, become an ever-bigger player at the state level. They're helping other state organizations now figure out how to organize themselves. I think they're doing an excellent job, and we want to continue to invest in, in working with them. And finally, one of the conversations we had was what do they need to focus on in the next year? And there's, they will take that input and bring it back to the full board for discussion and a vote, but I raised fire insurance, which was seconded by a number of people again. We're definitely going to keep working on the at-home effort, which we're going to be seeing in some legislation and maybe on the November ballot as a bond, just like, and, and the MHSA work. So, that's continuing. Still lots of concerns with both of those programs, but they do feel like they made some inroads, and will continue to try to make that work better for the counties. Those are obviously two programs that fall heavily on the county's shoulders. We were not included in the conversations up early on and for a long time, so they really had to work hard at the very end to get some things resolved, and, and that will continue. I think that's everything, maybe, Ed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heidi. And actually, thank you for the efforts you are taking at the state level and the national level. Great position to be into, and really appreciate the efforts you've put into fire insurance at the national level.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
I'm sorry that I forgot entirely. Thanks, Jeffrey's good work. When I did the PILT fly-in, which was to educate congressional members on the, the three-quarters of a million dollars that we get in this county every year through PILT and Secure Rural Schools, it has to be reauthorized every year. So, we, that was my second year to go back and advocate for that to be passed. It was right in the middle of the chaos in, in Congress, so it was a little difficult to get anything done there. But we tacked on a day, and I was able to meet with the staff of some of the important committees, Senator Wyden and Senator Waters, also with staff from our two senators in California, to talk about the fire insurance issue. The good news is most of the staff seemed mostly aware of the issue. They were not aware that fire agencies themselves were now at risk. And the good news also is that Senator Waters' staff said she had been tasked to write a bill but was struggling to figure out what to put in it. More good news, that everyone we talked to seemed to agree that one of the things that needed to happen was more resources and attention towards home hardening, that to reduce the risk at the local and regional levels had to happen to make the markets work, and they might be willing to provide more help on that. Less, less good news is that they don't know what to do with the rest of it. We're asking for a federal backstop for the, when the market fails, or additional regulations on the reinsurance market when that fails. And right now, nobody really wants to touch all those other possible solutions. But we're going to be working potentially to pull together some language and help, help continue to work on that and try to get some language in there that would be helpful to us. So, thank you for reminding me.
Thank you, Heidi.
Heidi?
Good work, Heidi. Um, yeah, thanks. I'm going to whiz through some things I did, but then I want to talk about things that I was involved with that a lot of other people did, kind of teamwork stuff, the summit and our Heart of Gold Ride. One of the funnest things I've ever done is I got invited to the CHP Cadet Training Academy in Sacramento, and they put me inside a, a police car and went 150 miles an hour around the track. I can, I can show you the video. It is super cool. Yeah, so I spent the day with CHP, and I learned all about the organization, and I've got to say, we have a new, Chris Rarden is our commanding officer in Truckee, and he's got a big, high-volume area there. So, it was really fun to kind of get his perspective. We drove down- really fun to kind of get his perspective. We drove down and back together as well, so got to catch up there. We're working on Eastside Fire Coalition, kind of off the heels of Measure B, which seems a long time ago. Really, our communities are asking to bring all those voices together in one room. So Cal Fire, Truckee Fire, Nevada County, Town of Truckee, Fire Safe Council, Firewise Communities, and others, all in one table, talking about what we're going to do in the east side. So that's been fun, a little bit challenging. Craig's helping out there. I'm optimistic. And then the Hurstville Recreation Master Plan, we met out on the bridge and had a great meeting with Design Workshop and everybody and talked to that community about how the master plan's going to affect them. And then also, if you get a chance, go onto the Hurstville, go to Nevada County and there's a Hurstville website. And they've, we've gotten it all updated with the survey. Tricia did a survey of record, which, God bless you for getting that done. It's awesome. And we now know where the boundaries are. We know where our property is and we know where our neighbor's property is. And it's just, it's great because we've, we've done a lot of work there to de-conflict that community. And it's not about what we get or don't get. It's just about now we know and now we can help support the community and their private property rights while also ensuring access to the river and the, and the trail. NCTC meeting, VTT meeting, Homeless Services Work Group in Eastern County. I'm going to mention, we have had on the books for a long time, this homeless, Eastern County Homeless Services Working Group that we're trying to convene. But unfortunately, Kathy Foley, who runs our warming shelter, notified us that we will not have a warming shelter. So the last two weeks or so, we've kind of been in crisis mode, trying to figure out what to do. We, as Nevada County, do not have any infrastructure for homeless services in Eastern County. There's no warming shelter. There's no anything. It's all done through Kathy Foley. We contribute to that, which I'm happy about. But now we have to play kind of a more integral role in bringing a solution for the homeless, particularly the sheltering for December, January, February, when it's really cold out. So Allison and I and a number of other people are trying to get around a table to figure out what we can do to get a shelter and shelter those people. More to come there. We had our Sustainability Summit, which was, which was outstanding. Heidi was, Heidi and I have been working on that for almost nine months with Jeffrey and Ariel and Mandy. And I just, and Allison have to say thank you so much for putting that together. It was 140 or so people talking about climate policy and climate resiliency and also trying to understand as policymakers, what's energizing us and what's dragging us down and where, where's the avenue for making change within our own community. And I really am proud of what we've done. I mean, when you sit around the table and hear about the groups that we invited, connected communities, tribal organizations, recreation-based people all talking about what we're doing in Nevada County. So I'm really, really optimistic. It was very, very cool. Supervisor, Chair Schofield and I have been on Budget Ad Hoc and also NSA QMD meetings. We do have a new executive director, I think officially made an offer and final negotiations with Julie Hunter. No relation to our Julie Hunter, but she's the new executive director. She lives in, I believe Plumas County? Or, yeah, Plumas County. Oh, lives in Reno. Okay. But her main office is up there. Capital Facilities Committee, Truckee River Basin Water Group meeting, Mountain Housing Council had its final meeting. I don't know if you've ever heard about the Mountain Housing Council. It's been around for years. It was a solutions-based organization. They, they had their final kind of phase two meeting when they presented all the data about what they've done. So that was quite interesting. One of the, I'll tell you what, one of the interesting findings was, the demand for housing is going down in Truckee because people are leaving. There's no demand because there's no more staff members left to need houses because nobody can afford them. So it's like the curve spiked and it's going down now because all the people who needed housing never found it and they went and found jobs elsewhere. So now the workforce is reduced because of housing, which is fascinating if you think about that. But, and mayors and managers had some Caltrans meetings and some transportation meetings. We did our CCC meeting and it was all about the resort communities, talking about traffic management in Truckee. We had a big problem with it last year. We've made a great, great headway. There's paid parking and reservation parking at the resorts now. So if you want to go up and park, if you have a car full of people and you carpool, you can get free parking with the reservation. So you don't have to wait in line. We'll see if it helps. We lost one of our members for LAFCO, Cheryl Dell. Everybody knows Cheryl. She's a very productive member of LAFCO and many other things that she's done helped us with the county. She, she's off of LAFCO and we're going to miss her a lot. I too went to Collaboration Day. It was great. And then we had our Heart of Gold Ride. And I think we may have some photos from it. It was an awesome event. And I just wanted to say thank you so much to Allison, did so much with this event and bringing all these community partners together, our sponsors, and all these people that made it happen. I went out on the ride and then came back. And when I came down, zooming down the ramp from the library, I saw the festival all set up, filled with people. And there were kids and it was like kids and ice cream and music. And Jeff did the music. So I just wanted to say a really great thank you to everybody. And Erica Seward, who organized it all, was great. If you get on this bike, you pedal and it runs a blender to make yourself a smoothie. And I made a smoothie.
Smoothie or a margarita.
Or a margarita. I made a smoothie and it was awesome. Yeah, there's part of the crew, some county staff members out there riding their bikes. And there were a lot of people that have no connection to the county or to the bike race. People just came out. This is dirt riders and Nevada County Search and Rescue were all over the course. Our final 65-year-old plus long-course rider came in when I was eating dinner at 7:30 that night. She had ridden 70 miles. She started eight in the morning and got done at seven. And I have a picture somewhere. I'll show everybody later, but I was so impressed. This is the aid station group at Lake City. So we had a big aid station out there. These are all volunteers. And there's some of our staff members that you'll recognize. I bought 10 pies from Sarah's Pies and we all ate a whole lot of pie afterwards. And there's Jeff's stage and the band. This band was actually really good. Yeah.
For Bright Futures and Neil.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so he's absolutely fabulous.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they were really good. I was quite impressed.
Me too.
There's a smoothie bike in operation. And that's out by the Diggins somewhere, up by Malkoff on the route. And that's what it looked like all day, killer fall weather. It was a little warm, but really great, 80 degrees and a lot of riders out there. Yeah, thanks for the support on that. It was a wonderful event. That's it.
So that was a great event. I was there for the morning. And so I actually saw the first person come across the line and it was fun. I actually saw Ariel and Steve finish. So that was kind of fun. Yeah. And it was fun. It was fun. I walked around the booths and, and of course, the band was playing up and it was, it was really, it was energizing. It was good. I think as this goes, this could really be a wonderful, so kudos. And all the staff and the different vendors that came out and different, and it was, it was really a great. But I didn't win. I put in for my darn, I, I put raffle tickets in, but no one called me. So, no, I'm just kidding.
Won the bike?
No.
So Jet Lo, who has volunteered innumerable hours with Bonk and other things, the person who is supposed to win the bike, who has done so much for everybody, won the e-bike.
That's so fun. That's, that's so cool. That's absolutely awesome. Well, on that note, I'm just going to lead off. So I was at RCRC, our annual meeting. It was great. And I tell you, they had two very amazing motivational speakers. And one of them was Kyle Warner. And he did his, was out building character both of and in your town through outdoor recreation. And he was incredible. He has a YouTube channel and his story and about life in general and how he got where he was, was really uplifting. Of course, it makes you want to build trails, right? He's from Chico area and just talked how that really saved him through his mental health issues. And, and then of course, he's created this new platform where he actually teaches mountain biking. It was some crazy stuff he does. I don't know how many broken bones he does, but he found a girlfriend that does the same thing. So he's in the right, he's going on the right path. But anyway, if you look up Kyle Warner on a YouTube, you'll, it's just incredible what he has. And then I would say the other real highlight for me at RCRC was of course, Adrienne Hassel. She spoke. What an incredible woman. She was out of no reason, in fact, for really no, because she never even went out hardly. She's a professional dancer, that happened to be mad and trying to figure out what life was and happened to be down and wondered what the Boston Marathon was all about and was blown up by one of the bombs. She was the most incredible uplifting woman I've ever talked to. I mean, and to, she danced again. She is a great advocate now for anything this ADA, unbelievable, works with our military. I, I just can't even go on. If you ever, her book's coming out and when it does, we'll have to watch. And actually, someone's making a movie about it. So anyway, that was probably the highlight really of the RCRC convention about really, there's so, nothing you can't do and move on and accomplish. Unbelievable. So that was fun on that. But again, this weekend, which is a fun weekend. So I came up to check out the gravel ride in the morning. That was great. Everyone was setting up. There was a hustle and bustle. Got to talk about the people excited about being here. Did get to see some of the bikes come in. It was great. Then I went off to Pin Valley. They had their annual Pin Valley Fall Festival and that was a lot of fun. Got to meet with a lot of constituents down there. But it was hot. It was a hot day. And then I got to close out my day though, with the first ever Bridgeport Farm-to-Table Dinner. And it was amazing. The folks there from Sierra Gold Foundation and State Parks, our Jessie, she was there from State Parks, they just did an incredible job. It was a gorgeous evening, a little warm, but luckily it kind of cooled off. And I happened to be by two windows that had a cross briefs. But Antonio did a fabulous job. And for a first effort, it was, it was really uplifting because now we have that bridge built, we have to figure out how to maintain it. I told the SOBs they need to change to MOB, maintain our bridge, so that we can continue to build fundraising, because it's really important. It was wonderful. They had music. We had local wine. Antonio did the dinner and Assemblywoman Megan Dally and her staff were there. It was great to see them. So anyway, that was a fun weekend. It was busy. I got to say, I, I was tired. It was hot and it was just a lot of fun stuff. And it, and I guess what I love is I see our community coming back out and getting engaged. And I think that's important as we move forward. So those were my fun things. So, and then I could go on and on. We had, it's been a busy thing to see. I went to Freed Open House. That was great. Freed does so much in our community. It's, it's amazing. And you know, we used to just think it was just for accessible needs. It had, it goes beyond that. And so I would encourage anybody that wanted to be a part of that or donate, if you have items, go over and get a tour of that. It's, it's incredible, the amount of work that they do in our community. We have so many great partners when it comes to homelessness, to ADA accessibility. I mean, just, it goes on and on. So that was a, it was a really great evening. And did the Pin Valley Community Center had a fundraiser because they're going to raise that roof on their community center over time. So that's a lot of fun. I really enjoy working with them. I had a great meeting and it was really interesting with some team from Lake Wildwood. And we talked about the lake and what it takes to maintain that and some of the issues and how the county is being a partner. And that was a great meeting. I'm also on the Emergency Service JPA, the SSV EMS. And that's always interesting to watch because it has a lot to do with our emergency services and our ambulance services, which we have two, Pin Valley and Dignity Health. And I could like to, happy to say Dignity Health signed their new contract. But it was, it's such an interesting JPA to sit on and listen to the issues we have with amount of paramedics we need. There's a lack of those kinds of things and what you need to run an ambulance service and the timing and the funding that it takes to do that. So I really am appreciative to be on that, on that JPA. I did get to do to the Teacher of Year Awards. Ed and I were both there. And that, talk about another uplifting speaker. I mean, incredible. So, but Annie Perdue, and she teaches at Ready Springs. She's our Teacher of the Year. And so that was a lot of fun. I'll let Ed talk a little bit more about that. I had a good meeting with staff and Craig and Steve, just talking about our fire breaks and the history and where our updates are, was really helpful. Jeffrey helped me put a, a book together because we are doing so much with grant funding and all the different entities and trying to pull that together. So we actually get some of these big projects finished and, or started even. And so that was really great meeting and thank them for their time because a lot went into them providing all the information that I needed. I went to Ed's Barbecue, which was a lot of fun. And was, you had some great guest speakers. Our sheriff did a wonderful job giving an overview again of what's going on. She did it at our last meeting, but she did great. We all got to hear from the DA. And I think that was really important to listen to how they are working together and what's going on in our community. And then of course, we had Consolidated Fire was there. So really great guest speakers along with our best, great speaker, Ed.
Keynote.
Keynote, keynote. But that was, it was great. And it was after we'd had this huge rain and you just couldn't even, it was a great afternoon. So another good deal. So let's see, I've been to Fire Safe Council. I'm on the Ag Advisory for the Nevada Joint Union High School District. And that's really always been interesting about where we go with education and provide, especially with our CT programs that we're doing and how do we do that and make it easier for our kids and jobs that will be accessible for them as they move through the programs. I had, I had a really good meeting with Waste Management and staff, met the new manager out there and talked about the changes that are coming and some improvements, especially with customer service. So I think when you call, you'll see some differences in that. I had a good meeting on ideas for different alternative housing. I think that's something we're going to continue to look as we move forward. So I'm looking forward to our workshop. Our workshop is going to be jam-packed with a lot of ideas. I mean, that's one thing that Nevada County seems to be is innovative, right? So we're looking at different ideas to how do we manage this housing crisis. I'm working a little bit with our Landmarks Committee with, we want to do a designation for the Knee Blown Ranch that's down in my neck of the woods. They've been around for a long time. It's, it's always an interesting process when you're working with fish and wildlife and attorneys. So I'm hoping someday I get to bring that to fruition and you get to see that. And I got to give Chuck, he's just been amazing. I also went to Street of Dreams. I think that's another good partner we have in housing. It was really well-attended. Lot of fun. You see different people that you don't see at different events. And it's this opportunity to connect and have conversations. And people always have to come up and ask different kinds of questions. You meet somebody from not your district or questions about the county or what you're doing. And always appreciate that. Allison was there and I know she gets questions. So that was a great evening. And none of this is, has to do with this, all the numerous meetings I have with constituents and staff. I think that's probably a big part of what we do here too, besides what we do at RCRC and CSAC, is kind of put out fires with some of our community people that we can help. I mean, we heard today, I have, I have a neighborhood that's very frustrated with cannabis. And, and I understand that, but it's not like we aren't working on that. It's, it's something that we have to work on every day. And it doesn't go unnoticed that they come. I, I think that's where those processes start or where we keep having these conversations and how do we fix it. And a lot of staff time does go in that and they are really not being ignored. Sometimes we don't always give you the answer you want to hear, but it's not like we're not trying to make a difference for everybody. So with that, we're going to keep working on that. Gosh, I know there's so many more things. I kind of jatted a lot down here today because there's a lot. I went to, oh, I had a town hall in North San Juan. That was, that was fun. That was great. And you know, like I was telling them, we don't always, like broadband came up. Rural counties, we live in a rural area where we're not all going to get broadband right off the bat. We know we need it and it is challenging. We are leading the way with broadband in the state on a lot of issues, especially with RCRC and our Golden State Connect. We have some wonderful things, but it's not going to, I mean, we're not going to turn the button on and all of us are going to have broadband at some point. But there is active involvement here. It's amazing. Our Steve Monahan in IGS, he is known throughout the state and looking for these innovative ideas and challenging things when the map doesn't look quite right. And I have to say, like Sarah was in my office and Jeff, we've been working on those issues. Always appreciate those comments coming in. We learned a lot about the folks that don't have broadband, but they're also struggling with AT&amp;T landlines. And that's something we're working on in our office as well. And we've asked people as well. And we've asked people, send in your number and why you're not having, why you need landlines because you know, they're talking in the next four years doing away with landlines. So it's really important for us to have that information. And we're responding with CPUC about the importance of we don't have all broadband. But anyway, it was a good meeting. We had fire there. We had, our sheriff was there. Caleb Dardick was there. Thank you. Just to give a little overview, kind of what the issues we're going to see possibly with this Pioneer Energy. We had Tricia Tilletson was there and it was nice. We got a little overview of the water suppression system that's going to happen up there hopefully. And there'll be another meeting following up on that. And it was great. I just can't, I know, we say this, but staff, they could, like I even told everybody, they could all have been home with their feet up in their bark loungers. But you know what I said? I want to have a town hall. And they all said, okay, let's do it. And even Heather from Public Works came and George from Building Department. So there was a lot of staff there for people to ask questions. And Jeffrey, you're always a rock store to get it all started up. And I appreciate you there. Our sheriff actually had to go out on a call while we were there. So it just was really interesting. So those are just a few of the things that have been going on in my district. And with that all, thanks, Ed.
I'm gonna rush through this. So I attended the, an award ceremony for the Grass Valley Police Department. They were handing out awards and promotions for the people. And it had been like three years since they had done it. So some of the people who received them were from the time when I was still on the city council. So I was appreciative of them inviting me to come. I attended the ERC board meeting in September to hear a presentation that was made on the Loma Rica Industrial Park and kind of what's going on up there. And they knocked on a lot of doors to try and get information and they're still working on it. I attended the Area Foreign Aging Meeting in September. Unfortunately, I missed the 50th Anniversary Celebration they had in their office because it was the same week as the RCRC Conference that I attended. I did the 9/11 Memorial sponsored by the Grass Valley Police Department and our fire protection agencies in the city of Grass Valley and the Chamber of Commerce. It was a very nice event. It was well attended down on the New Mill Street Plaza. I did a site walk on Hell's Half Acre with the PG&E staff and some of the concerned citizens and neighbors out there. It was actually interesting to be out there with the people who have been most impacted by it, which I would say is the school and the neighbors and just to listen to their comments. And we continue to work with PG&E to figure out what they can do to help remediate the situation that they've created there. And then a few days later, I did the Land Trust Reception on Hell's Half Acre. They bought the 128 acres across the street from Adams Avenue site. And they're going to do some great stuff out there. It was really well attended. People were very appreciative of the saving this piece of property, especially after seeing the devastation that happened across the street. And I'm really excited to see what they're going to be doing, putting trails in. And I think they want to do some sort of interpretive signage and some different things about the wildlife out there. I had a meeting with the kind of leaders of the Community Foundation to get updated on what they're working on and to understand the county's role in that, since that happened before I was elected. But I really am supportive of the work that they're going to be doing with that. I was invited from, by Hospitality House to attend a neighborhood meeting in the Glenwood Pines area. So several years ago, Hospitality House purchased the Sierra Guest House there. And I believe right now it has about, I think, 10 or 12 people who live there. They're actually expanding that. And so they did a neighborhood meeting because they're really trying to work hard with the neighbors there. It's a little bit of a difficult situation because it's a private street. It's not a city street. So they're collaborating with the neighbors to come up with some solutions, but they're going to be adding 17 additional beds there in the next year to, really for the most vulnerable homeless population that we have in our community, veterans and seniors. I also attended the RCRC Conference. I couldn't agree more with Sue. The keynote speakers were both fantastic. The young man from Chico, who is, he's a professional mountain bike rider. He was so impressive. And I did look at his videos too. Very scary. And he said, he tells people that this is mountain biking, but not mountain biking light. And then he showed a picture of what mountain biking light looked like, which is much different. I don't recommend people go out there and do the stuff that he's doing. Yeah. But when I came home, so the city of Grass Valley has been working for years with the property owners at the North Star, which is Newmont Mining Company. And they've had a discussion about potentially putting a professional mountain biking track out there. And so when I met with the city the following week, I kind of pitched that to them and said, hey, let's get connected with this young man because he, this is what he does. And he, I think they went to Arkansas, was it? Yeah. To Bentonville, Arkansas, which they're very heavily supported by the Walmart Foundation out there. But they showed what it can do for your community to have these mountain biking facilities. It was really impressive. Also attended the Waste Management Meeting. I met the new marketing director, regional marketing director. And you know, it's interesting creating the relationship with Waste Management. I had a constituent email a couple of weeks ago who's having some really, a commercial user having really serious problems with Waste Management. And I referred her to the general manager and he has been fantastic in helping resolve their situation. So very appreciative of that. Let's see, I also attended the Habitat for Humanity Event, which is a great, a great one. They raised a bunch of money. They've got, I think, five new houses coming online. It's just fantastic to listen to the recipients, the people who are purchasing and putting their sweat equity into theirs homes. I really feel like that is our most successful form of affordable housing has really come through the Habitat Projects. I had a meeting last week with Andrew Withers, who is the superintendent of the Grass Valley School District and been trying to meet with the stakeholders in my district and just listen to kind of some of the issues that they've been having. He's doing a really great job there. He's got some, it's a tough role being the superintendent for the school district that probably deals with the most amount of diversity and poverty and student issues in the county. So I was really impressed to listen to some of the things that he's been doing. Earlier, we heard there was a phone call in regard to the Bennett Street properties. Last week, I attended a meeting, actually hosted a meeting myself and the sheriff with the property owners. The majority of the property owners that are affected by what's happening out there with the homeless camps actually happen to be in the city limits of Grass Valley. But we're working, the county, the sheriff's office and the Grass Valley Police Department is working on some solutions out there. And we will be doing a cleanup in conjunction with Hospitality House on October 26 at eight o'clock, starting at eight o'clock in the morning. The property owners were all very collaborative, wanted to be collaborative and cooperative. They're very frustrated with some of the things that happen out there. But the going in and cleaning it up and doing some mastication in there, I think is going to help a lot for some of the problems that are happening there. So October 26, and it'll, hopefully we'll get it into the county email or the county newsletter coming up. I also have been attending the city of Grass Valley's meetings on their town halls that they've been doing on putting a tax on the ballot next year for fire prevention and vegetation mitigation. So I think they're having maybe the final one at their council meeting tonight. But there's been some community discussion about it, some opposition from some of the business organizations, some support from some of the firewise communities. So I'm not sure exactly what they're going to end up doing. They have to make a declaration of an emergency to be able to put it on the March ballot because it's not a general election for them. If they're not able to make that at their meeting, I believe tonight or on the 24th, they will have to wait until November for a general election. And then I also attended the Sierra Harvest Lunch last week, which is a great, I love that organization and the things that they do, providing healthy meals for our kids. And their gleaning committee, that was just amazing to me, how much agriculture and how collaborative those, all those groups are with one another. I also attended the Collaboration Day. I was at the sheriff's event, speaking at Sierra College. And I believe their next one is going to be on fire insurance. And I think it's next Friday, the 20th. And it looked really interesting. They've got a high-powered insurance guy coming in to talk about what that means. And I continue to attend the Ad Hoc Fire Committee meetings. We had one last week. And the group is really moving forward. Believe they were having a meeting, I think it was on Saturday, to talk about the governance, which is the next steps that they need to come up with, with the consolidation of the three fire agencies. So more to come on that. And I'm sure there's many more things, but I will leave it at that.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think we've used our 20 minutes up that Teen and Julie allotted for us, right? I'll try to make this quick. One of the highlights was the Teacher of the Year Award. And it was very special to Carol and I because while Annie Perdue is a teacher at Ready Springs, of course, down with Sue, and Sue's very aware of what goes on at that school, she's one of my neighbors. And Annie has a big German Shepherd that she walks every evening and often wanders by when I'm out on the deck. What are you cooking tonight, Ed? You know? And so I get to hear about some of the challenges that she has as a teacher, but also to see the dedication and the love for the profession that she has. So that was really special. And it was on the consent agenda at the last meeting. So we were able to give a really nice certificate to her. And all the teachers got a certificate from the county. And that one was just kind of special. I attended Sierra Harvest also as a guest of Caleb's. It's a great organization, right? I'm sitting next to Ben Lovett, Ariel's husband. Ben's a big man. And I'm wondering, I haven't asked him what he thought of the lunch. It was a healthy lunch for sure. But I asked Scott Lay at the teacher's dinner, do you think that's really what the kids are looking for? And he said, eh, probably not. But such a great, great organization. Real quick, you know, I have this wife that's really kind of a special lady. She's on the Freed Board of Directors. She's on the Hospice Advisory Board. And now she's joined the Hospital Foundation Board. So are you on that too? Oh, my gosh. And of course, Allison, you're on the board of the hospital. So we're involved with the hospital now. The Nortech Ad Hoc Committee, I mentioned this before, I mean, most people don't even know what Nortech is. But our, the organization that is part of Nortech here is the Alliance for Workforce Development. And this committee is looking at bringing those groups together and putting them all under one structure, which would be Nortech. And there's reasons to do this. Much about money, of course, that so much of this now is so much dependent on grants, other than just disasters. And we, you know, we can't really live on disasters all the time. But what's been coming out of this, myself and one other person are the only governing board members on this, but we work, we talk with, all our meetings with the service providers, Christine in particular. And the alliance is the largest out of the 11. I think we represent, Alliance represents seven of the counties. So they're really a key player. But what we've seen is that the three service organizations coming together and working together. It's really incredible, to the point at the last meeting, I said, you know, maybe it isn't that we need to form this one big body, but simply having a memorandum of understanding. Now, it continues to evolve, but it's really turned into quite a good committee. Audit review, Hardy and I sat in on that, myself by Zoom because I forgot about it. And it was at 7:30 in the morning before our last meeting. I sit on the Bear River FFA Advisory Team. And I only bring this up because one of the things that, you know, they changed their schedule as to when kids came into school about three years ago at the high school district. Bear River's only had one year to work on this, but now the district is coming back and saying, we may have to change back to the old schedule. What that means is a lot of the opportunity that kids have to take different projects like choir and sports and FFA, that type of thing. It makes it harder for the kids to go back to the old schedule. And the problem is financial, that the district is in a hole and is looking for ways to balance the budget. So it's an unfortunate thing, I think, especially in Bear River that really hasn't had enough time to really investigate it. So that was, that was good. Mentioned air quality and having a new executive director, we're pleased with, with the same name as Julie. Oh, and I wanted to be sure and mention ERC because at our last meeting, first of all, we've got a new president coming in and it's Larry Picard with Waste Management. And I'm very pleased with that. I think it puts him out into the community and it gives us much more access to WM. So I was very pleased with that. But the program we had was Tricia and Kimberly speaking on economic development. It was an excellent presentation. And it really tells us how economic development fits into almost every aspect of what we do here at the county level. And Tricia and Kimberly did an exceptional job with that. And then finally, I want to mention my South County MAC again because it's really turned into a great organization. I mentioned the public meeting they had with Pioneer Energy where the community has the opportunity to come in and go one-on-one with some of these people versus three minutes. No, no, no more. You're done. Sit down. So the last one we had, had to do with the storage facility that is coming in, wanting to come in on Commie Road right there, next to the Holiday Development there. And the community wasn't a big turnout, but it was a good turnout. And they had the opportunity to go one-on-one with those people. And it was, I felt very, very productive. Just one example of it was one person got up, said, hey, you know, the county had to come in and get you to clean up that site. Once you demolished the facility, you just left it laying there. And then, even though they got you to do that, you left the concrete and just put a fencing area around it. You know, what do we think about that? And the response from the owner was, looking at this guy, said, we can do better. And when the meeting was over, those two people were still talking to each other. I mean, that to me was really very, very impressive. And I think we're going to see much more of that. We've got another one coming down the line that's going to be very controversial down there. And I don't know, maybe even bringing some cannabis ones in. So anyways, I'm very pleased and I'm glad the board allowed us to go at least to 2024. And the one thing that I didn't go to that I really wished I had was the Health Fair. I'll remember that next year. And that's all I have. And maybe Kit, you would like to read us into closed session and we'll ask for public comment on that also.
Certainly, Chair Schofield. So County Council's requesting three separate closed session items. The first is whether litigation should be initiated by the county in one matter. The second is requesting a closed session to discuss the existing litigation case, which is William Dolman versus the County of Nevada, as listed on the agenda. And the third one is to discuss a matter in which there is significant threat of litigation against the county.
Very good. And is there any public comment on this? I see none in the chamber. Madam Clerk, are there anyone online?
Chair Schofield, there are no callers or written comment.
Very good. Then I will close the public comment portion and we will go into closed session. And when we come out, we'll just ask you to come back out here and we will adjourn following the closed session. Thank you, Kit. Thank you, Kit.
Yes, Chair Schofield. So related to SR 234778, the board has voted unanimously to file a complaint with the CPUC related to the PG&E gas line as discussed recently in the Hells Halfacre situation. So we will be doing that right away. Regarding the other two matters listed in the agenda, direction was given to staff.
Very good. Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.